Thank you very much, Sam. Welcome to the Denver City Council meeting on Monday, August 4th, 2025. Council members, please join Councilmember Gilmore in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, please join Councilmember Gilmore as they lead us to the Denver City Council Land Acknowledgement.
Thank you, Council President Sandoval. The Denver City Council honors and acknowledges that the land on which we reside is a traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapahoe peoples. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. We honor elders past, present, and future, and those who have stewarded this land throughout generations. We also recognize that government, academic, and cultural institutions were founded upon and continue to enact exclusions and erasures of indigenous peoples. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to working to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequalities and recognize the current and future contributions of indigenous communities in Denver.
Any council announcements this afternoon? Any council announcements this afternoon? Councilman, sorry, start us off.
Great, thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to remind everyone who is a resident or property owner in Cherry Creek.
Is your mic on?
It's not on. Oh. There we go. You think this was the first time I ever made an announcement at council? Um, thank you, Madam President. Just to remind everyone who might be a resident or property owner in Cherry Creek, we spent the first eight months of this year looking at the potential of a general improvement district in the Cherry Creek neighborhood. What we found at the conclusion of it was that what people really want are specifics before they can make a decision about whether this is something they really want to pursue or not. That whole kind of next part of the conversation is completely resident-led. It is whatever the residents want to do. And so we are putting together working groups, one for the Cherry Creek Triangle, one for the Cherry Creek East Neighborhood, one for the Cherry Creek North Neighborhood, and then one for residents who live in the Cherry Creek North Neighborhood but inside the Business Improvement District boundaries. So four separate working groups that we're putting together tomorrow at 5:00 PM is the final day to sign up for those. We would love to have residents and property owners within the Cherry Creek statistical area and the triangle just below it to join us for those conversations so that you all can decide what it is you would want to see, if you want to see anything, and how the governance structure would work and all of those different kinds of things. So please sign up by tomorrow at 5:00 PM if you'd like to join one of the working groups. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Vigeras.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to share and invite the community out to La Loteria tacos on South Broadway on Wednesday, August 6th. We will be having a meet and greet Wednesday at 4:00 PM, so come say hi. I also wanted to share that we're having a hiring event with United Airlines in District 7, so on Thursday, United Airlines Career Site and Town Community will be at Habitat for Humanity Headquarters from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, offering support with resume writing, application process, and guidance for interviews, best practices. This event is open to the public and completely free, so be sure to tell your network and stop by this Thursday. Also, we will be celebrating All My Relations Festival at Levitt Pavilion. We'll be hosting a free music and celebration for the third annual All My Relations Celebration. For those who don't know, Levitt Pavilion is an independent nonprofit dedicated to building community through music located inside Ruby Hill Park. The All My Relations event will be a night full of music and connection in a beautiful city that we all call home. Doors open at 6:00 PM and the show starts at 7:00. We hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lumina Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two announcements. One, I would invite people to come to a Heart of Southeast Denver event. We usually do our large South by Southeast festival. This year it looks a little bit different, and we are going to have the Colorado Symphony play at Bible Park. The opening act is Thomas Jefferson High School. They have their orchestra out. They start at four. We have an art dedication from one of the projects that's going to be dedicated at the park, and then we should have the Colorado Symphony start around five. There will be food trucks and tables. Super fun. Would love to see everyone there. And it is open until the end of the month. I'm going to read the website that we have here. For it, it's artist.lforentry.org if anyone is interested. We are looking forward to seeing what kind of art projects get submitted. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple really amazing events are coming up this weekend in West Denver. The first is site on Azteca this Friday and Saturday, Friday from 6:00 to 10:00 PM and Saturday, 1:00 to 9:00 PM. This is the first time we're doing it for two days, so I really love how it's growing. But it's this beautiful night market and festival that blends our Asian and Latinx communities, and you really, I will see something like this anywhere else in Denver. So love that we can offer that. I think somebody's emceeing karaoke right here, and me, the kimchi burrito eating contest. So join us. And then Sunday is the last of our series, our concert series in Lama Lincoln Park in the Lama Amphitheater. It's Lama Live with Youth on Record Artists, so 5:00 to 7:00 PM there. Bring an umbrella in case it's super sunny. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Madam President. If you are giggling about karaoke and food eating, this is going to hit your funny bone. On August 23rd, from 5:00 until 10:00 PM, Clear Parker Robinson Dance is holding their annual, and it's the fifteenth annual, 2025 Dancing with the Denver Stars. This is where public officials and leaders throughout the community make fools of themselves dancing in front of a crowd of hundreds to raise money for the amazing Clear Parker Robinson Dance. Hundred percent goes to community events. One of the fools that will be dancing will be me. So you can come out and get your funny bone tickled laughing at my try at female group hip-hop dancing. And if that's not funny enough, Mayor Mike Johnston will be wearing his boots and dancing as well. So that is Saturday, August 23rd, from 5:00 until 10:00 PM. An amazing community organization, Clear Parker Robinson Dance, and two fools who are your elected officials will be dancing to raise monies for that amazing organization. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Vigeras, can I put you at the AM? Yes. Councilmember Heinz, so if you just take yourself out and add, yeah, Councilmember Heinz.
Thank you, Madam President. Making sure my microphone is on too. I'd like to share the details about National Night Out. National Night Out is a nationwide annual celebration. There happens to be a nation in Denver's Perfect Ten tomorrow night from 4:30 to 7:30 at Arapahoe and Sixteenth as in Skyline Park. You can come downtown and hang out with a whole bunch of people, including me. There'll be fire trucks, ambulances, old police cruisers. I think the gang police car will be there as well. I know the mayor will be there, I will be there, so please feel free to come out. Also, very adjacent to District 10, I think the exact same time is 4:30 to 7:30 in City Park, there will be another celebration of National Night Out. That will be in Council District 9, which is a fine place also to visit National Night Out. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilmore.
Thank you, Council President. Along the lines of National Night Out, tomorrow it will be hosted in the Village Place Park in the Montbello community, and so I'm sure that a lot of folks and vendors will be out at that tomorrow night. And then on this Saturday, from 11:00 until 4:00, we have the 10th Annual Wellness and Backpack Giveaway. It's in partnership with Montbello 2020, so many different community partners, and we will be out at Lincoln Tech, which is off of I-70 and Peoria out in Montbello on Saturday. So if you need school supplies, you need different resources in the city, we would welcome you to come out there and visit us on Saturday. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vigeras.
Thank you. I forgot to mention, in case someone doesn't know, that All My Relations Fest is meant to uplift our indigenous community, and I wanted to share that it will be featuring music by Thea with Cherokee Social. And we will, yeah, that's all. Thank you, Phil Robertson.
Thank you. We have a couple exciting events happening next week, next Wednesday, August 13th, from 6:00 to 7:00. It's our last free yoga session courtesy of my office in partnership with CanP Yoga. Join us for a relaxing series at the Historic Avich Carousel Dome located at 3775 Tennyson. Just bring your yoga mat and a calm state of mind. Once again, that's August 13th, from 6:00 to 7:00. And next Friday, August 15th, from 6:00 to 10:00 at Zuni Park, is our annual 10th annual movie in the park that I'm featuring over twenty city agencies, local organizations, a free rock climbing wall courtesy of Denver Parks and Rec, Little Man Ice Cream, who doesn't love ice cream, and a live DJ from the Denver DJ School that's located in northwest Denver, and an appearance for Miles, the Broncos mascot. So I look forward to seeing you next Friday at Zuni Park on 51st and Zuni. I see no other announcements. That's one. Oh, Councilwoman, sorry about that. That's okay. I just, so in partnership with Denver Parks and Rec, and many of you all know this about the Park Hill Golf Course, that there were over 200 trees that were planted at the Park Hill Park for families who had lost individuals to gun violence. And so there are actual ashes in the soils of the Park Hill Park, and they're trying to get in contact with the families who may have buried or planted a tree for their loved ones. And so this was done under the Mending Roots Project. So if you are a family who might be watching this, whose family member is ashes or the tree is associated with that park, please reach out to my council office, or if you know of someone, please have them reach out to my council office. It's really important that we make these families whole. Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no other announcements, there are no presentations, there are no communications. There's two proclamations being heard this afternoon. Councilmember Watson, will you please read Proclamation 1123?
Yes, Council President. Proclamation number 2511. And whereas Denver Community Health Services has ten community health centers and nineteen school-based health centers with a mission of providing primary and preventative healthcare services to the residents of the city and county of Denver, and acts as a safety net to the medically underserved of Denver. And whereas the community and school-based health centers are located in high-needs areas, provide comprehensive primary healthcare services to their patients, and provide services to all residents of their service area with fees based on ability to pay. And whereas the Denver Community Health Services is a leading primary healthcare system, providing healthcare services to Denver's uninsured and underinsured population. And whereas the Denver Health Services provides high-quality healthcare as evidenced by indicators such as childhood immunization rates, well-child visit rates, adult hypertension control, and diabetes management. And whereas the outstanding teams of healthcare professionals and staff are being honored for their display of commitment and dedication to the well-being of all patients. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Denver City Council, Section 1, that the Denver City Council hereby proclaims August 3rd through 9th, 2025, as Denver Community Health Center Week. And Section 2, that the clerk and recorder of the city and county of Denver shall affix a seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation, and that a copy be transmitted to Denver Health.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson. Your motion to adopt.
Madam President, I move that Proclamation 251123 be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council. Councilmember Watson.
Madam President, it is my honor, and I'm wearing my pin tonight. Thank you, Stephanie, for providing that to me. Denver Health, what can we not say? You are the glue that keeps our communities together. My mom is always watching Big Denver, and Eastside Clinic is where she receives her healthcare. You provide an opportunity not only for our seniors but for our youth. At Manuel High School, one of the most frequently visited clinics within schools is present at Manuel High School. Community members from all over the East Side go there. The work that you do is imperative when we're feeling and seeing attacks from a federal government that does not believe that healthcare, our access to healthcare, is a right and a responsibility. I want to thank you and your teams for your partnership throughout my last two and a half years and your commitment to Denver throughout your history here. May we continue to support you in all the ways that you need support. We thank you all for the work you're doing this week and every week. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, will call. Councilmembers Vigeras. Hi. Flynn.
Hi.
Gilmore.
Hi.
Councilwoman Vigeras.
Aye.
Heinz.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Parity.
Aye.
Ramara Campbell.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. Proclamation 1123 adopted. We now have five minutes for the proclamation acceptance. Councilmember Cashman. Councilmember Watson. Sorry. Who would you like to invite up to accept the proclamation?
Madam President, I'd like to invite Dr. Rebecca Hanrati and Dr. Dwayne Mata. Please introduce yourselves as you begin your presentation.
Thank you. I'm Rebecca Hanrati. I'm the Chief Ambulatory Officer at Denver Health. I have worked at Denver Health for 23 years and had the honor to practice primary care, internal medicine at our oldest community health center, Eastside Clinic.
Hi, my name is Dwayne Mata. I've been at Denver Health for eight years, and I'm the Associate Chief Ambulatory Officer and also the Chair of Dental Services. I practice at all our Denver Health dental clinics in the United States and also a practitioner in Southeast Denver.
So on behalf of Denver Community Health Services, we are honored to accept this proclamation and deeply grateful to Councilman Watson and all of the members of the Denver City Council for this meaningful recognition during National Health Center Week. This week is a time to celebrate the vital role community health centers play across the country and right here in Denver. Health centers like ours serve as a beacon of hope and access, providing high-quality, comprehensive care to individuals and families regardless of their ability to pay.
Did you know that community health centers serve 32.5 million Americans? That's one and a half each year, which includes 1.4 million people experiencing homelessness, 9.4 million children, over 400,000 veterans, and 3.8 million people over the age of 65. Community health centers employ a workforce of over 500,000 healthcare professionals and administrative staff across the country. Health centers reduce health disparities and improve outcomes in underserved communities. Every dollar invested in a health center generates significant savings by reducing costly emergency expenses. The Denver Health or Community Health Team is proud to carry this mission forward every day. We serve more than 200,000 patients annually across our primary care clinics, our school-based health centers, urgent care clinics, dental clinics, and more, providing culturally responsive, patient-centered care.
This week, we paused to recognize and celebrate our dedicated teams, the nurses, providers, medical assistants, behavioral health professionals, support staff, and administrators who make a difference in the lives of our patients every single day. We are proud to be part of this community, and we reaffirm our commitment to health equity, access, and excellence in care. Thank you again for this honor, and happy National Health Centers Week.
Thank you. I will now read Proclamation 251124. Recognizing the annual Brothers Redevelopment and Denver Employee Volunteer Opportunities, Paint-a-Thon Day in the city and county of Denver on this Saturday, August 9th, 2025. Whereas through the continued partnership between Denver Employee Volunteer Opportunities DEVO and Brothers Redevelopment, Inc., more than thirty city and county of Denver employees will dedicate their time and energy to painting the homes of deserving senior homeowners during Brothers Redevelopment, Inc.'s 47th Annual Paint-a-Thon. And whereas this volunteer effort provides critical home maintenance support free of charge, saving fixed income older adults in Denver thousands of dollars while supporting aging in place. And whereas participating volunteers will enhance neighborhood aesthetics and help preserve home values in communities throughout the city and county of Denver. And whereas the Paint-a-Thon reflects the spirit of civic engagement and highlights how public employees give back to the communities they serve every day. And whereas this initiative continues to have a positive and lasting impact on residents, exemplifying the power of partnership, compassion, and collective action. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Denver City Council, Section 1, that the Denver City Council recognizes the day of August 9th, 2025, as Brothers Redevelopment Paint-a-Thon Day in the city and county of Denver. Section 2, that the clerk of the city and county of Denver shall attest and affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation, and that a copy be transmitted to the DEVO board. I will now offer the motion to adopt. I move that Proclamation 1124 be adopted. It has been moved and seconded. I will make the comment. I'm proud to be the sponsor of this proclamation, recognizing Brothers Redevelopment 47th Annual. It's a very long time, forty-seven years, almost as long as I've been alive, so I've been doing it my whole life, and the city employees who roll up their sleeves on August 9th. A special thank you to the more than thirty volunteers from DEVO who are using a deed stay to serve our neighbors. This is an example of our employees' devotion to service, to service the community both on and off the clock. The average Paint-a-Thon project equals roughly one-fifth of a senior's annual income, making this service truly life-changing. And today's proclamation highlights the power of the partnership between Brothers Redevelopment and our own workforce here in the city. Both combining nonprofit know-how with city talent, and we deliver bold, tangible results for the residents who built the city before us. And I encourage all the city employees to get involved in our communities. And I'll just end on a personal note. I had an uncle who lived in Chaffee Park neighborhood, and he had rheumatoid arthritis. He lived there with my grandma, and when my grandma passed away, my uncle couldn't fix up his house. He was on a fixed income. And most importantly, he was disabled. He had rheumatoid arthritis, which really needed his fingers to fix it, did not work well. And there was an awful hailstorm that hit that neighborhood in 2016 when I was a council aide. And I went by his house one day, and he came outside and he said, "Hita, I'm so embarrassed to have people over." And I said, "What's going on?" And he said, "Look at my house." And I noticed how bad the hail had hit. And I was a council aide at the time, and I found out about this Paint-a-Thon, and his house got painted because of this Paint-a-Thon. And before he passed away, it was one of the early days, and he got really sick, and he invited my family over to his house. And he was not a man of emotions. Many people know Latinos have a hard time sometimes showing their emotions. And he told the story about how proud he was that city workers painted his house for free and how he was a proud homeowner. And when it sold, it probably sold for more because paint is the biggest resource that you can do. So thank you. It's a very personal story for me, for my uncle. He gave a lot of pride before he passed away, so I can't thank you enough. Madam Secretary, will call. Councilmembers Vigeras.
Aye.
Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vigeras.
Aye.
Heinz. Cashman.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Parity.
Aye.
Ramara Campbell.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Twelve ayes. Twelve ayes. Proclamation 1124 has adopted. We now have time for the proclamation acceptance, and I would like to invite up Jeff Martinez, Jason Stutman, Nathan Gray, Reed Matsuda, and anyone else who'd like to come up and accept the proclamation on behalf of the Denver Paint-a-Thon.
My name's Reed Matsuda. I'm the Board Chair for Denver Employee Volunteer Opportunities. Been a public servant for eighteen years. I'm proud to announce that this is our twenty-first year partnering with Brothers Redevelopment. So city council members, thank you today for your time and for your support in this proclamation. As a Denver native and a public servant, it's an honor to be in such great company. As our city stumbles through budgetary concerns, Brothers Redevelopment, Inc. continues to be a champion of the people to provide affordable, safe, and accessible housing for Denver's most vulnerable populations. The investments from Brothers ensures that Denver will remain vibrant and beautiful. So as I stand here on my soapbox, I would like to thank Jason Stutman and the entire Brothers Redevelopment team for their continued commitment to this community. From the, really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, Jason. I would now like to turn to my attention to a few special people. In the face of uncertainty and all the stresses and feels that follow, these people continue to show up. These people don't ask for compensation for their acts. They just want to give back and help in any way they can. These people are the essence of what it means to be a public servant. So please help to acknowledge Leah Huffer, Dominic Diaz, Rosa Molina, and Caitlin Abreu. Thank you for your commitment to the well-being of this community, for your dedication over the years has fueled me to be better. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Jason.
All right. Just candidly, before I start with my remarks, just wanted to say thank you to you. One of the things that I know to be true, working with hundreds of volunteer groups and thousands of volunteers, is that a successful partnership, such as between Brothers Redevelopment and the city of Denver, Denver Employee Volunteer Opportunities, one of the things that it absolutely takes is someone who is a leader, someone who is an inspiration, and someone who is a catalyst. And you, Reader, all of those things. It's been my pleasure to work with you. Thank you. Thank you for your kind words, Madam President. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon and for honoring with the proclamation the twenty-two-year partnership coming up this Saturday between Denver Employee Volunteer Opportunities and Brothers Redevelopment through the annual Paint-a-Thon program. My name is Jason Stutman. I manage the volunteer department at Brothers Redevelopment, which includes the Paint-a-Thon program in its forty-seventh year. You stole my joke a little bit. I always remember I am the same age as the paint fun. For more than two decades, this partnership has brought together city and county of Denver employees, community volunteers, their friends and family that they engage in volunteerism to total out painting 138 homes of low-income older adults, residents living with disabilities in the effort to stabilize neighborhoods, promote connectedness and belonging in our communities, to restore pride in homeownership, and increase our older adults' agency and resiliency in an effort to help them to successfully age in place right here in the city and county of Denver. This work was accomplished by DEVO volunteers by the number of 2,033 volunteers donating 15,821 hours valued at $357,300. hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This is a powerful reminder of what can be achieved when government and nonprofit organizations partner and work together hand in hand to make our community stronger. While we recognize the sunsetting of Denver Employee Volunteer Opportunities this year, we also celebrate this lasting legacy, one that lives on through the walls, porches, gables, painted all across the City and County of Denver, and through the smiles of our older adult neighbors whose lives were changed by their efforts. At Brothers Redevelopment, we remain committed to carrying this legacy of partnership with the City and County of Denver forward. As a trusted nonprofit serving Colorado since nineteen seventy-one, we offer a wide range of housing programs, from home repairs and accessibility modifications, to housing counseling, to eviction prevention, rent, mortgage, and utility assistance, and affordable housing development. The Paint-a-thon is just one of the many examples of how Brothers Redevelopment meets people exactly where they are at, with compassion, with care, and with real solutions that make the concept of home possible. As we look to the future, we invite the City and County of Denver, all of its departments and its talented employees, to continue to partner with us, whether it's through volunteering, referring residents in need, collaborating on housing initiatives. Brothers Redevelopment is here to serve, just as we've done for over fifty-four years. Thank you again for honoring this milestone with the proclamation, um, and thank you to every City and County of Denver employee who, over the past two-plus decades, have picked up a paintbrush to make this possible. Thank you.
Madam Secr- Madam Secretary, please read the bills for introduction. From the Health and Safety Committee, twenty-five dash one zero four four, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed ammendatory revenue agreement between the City and County of Denver and the Colorado Division of Criminal Justice for continued funding of Denver Community Corrections citywide. From the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, twenty-five dash one zero four three, a bill for an ordinance revoking revocable limit granted by the ordinance number nine seventy-seven, series of two thousand and four, to Argus of Colorado Home Health Incorporated. You good? Okay. Council members, this is your last opportunity to call out an item. Now, I will do a recap. Under Resolutions, Councilmember Parity has called out Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero nine seven eight for comment. Under Bills for Introduction, no items have been called out. Under Bills for Final Consideration, Council President Sandoval has called out Council Bills twenty-five dash zero nine two two and twenty-five dash zero nine eight seven for postponement to a date certain. Councilmember Watson has called out Council Bill twenty-five dash zero six eight six to delay consideration until five-thirty P M. session. Councilmember Parity has called out Council Bills twenty-five dash ten fifty-four and twenty-five dash ten fifty-five for a vote. Councilmembers Parity, Torres, and Lewis have called out Council Bills twenty-five dash ten sixty, twenty-five dash ten fifty-three, twenty-five ten fifty-six, and twenty-five dash ten fifty-seven for amendment. And Councilmember Sawyer has called out Council Bills twenty-five dash ten fifty-three and twenty-five dash ten fifty-seven for amendment. Under pending, no items have been called out. Madam Secretary, please put the first item on our screens. Council Resolutions twenty-five dash zero nine seven eight, a resolution approving a proposed ammendatory agreement between the City and County of Denver and West Publishing Corporation to provide legislative, investigative database access to various city agencies citywide. Councilmember Parity, please go ahead and comment on Council Resolution zero nine seven eight.
Thank you. Um, I called this off not for a vote, but just for comment because, um, Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez and I had an interesting presentation from the city agencies that use this contract. Um, the, it's just a good example of a city contract that's using, uh, a company that's aggregating a lot of data. Um, and so I was grateful that, um, the city agencies that work under this contract reached out to West Publishing and just learned more about, uh, what its data sources are. Um, of course, if you're an attorney, you know it is the, the publishing company that compiles like all court opinions in the United States, and you're in it every single day. Um, but in recent years, it's also gotten into gathering a lot of other, um, information, much of which is public record and published by government agencies, like, uh, property records, uh, court records that are not necessarily published opinions, um, and then some privately aggregated data, uh, such as business directories. Um, so I, I thought it was fascinating that this particular service, unless Publishing notes clear, um, notes that it gathers some information from license plate readers, which should have been a topic we've been talking about a lot in the city. Um, and based on the outreach that we got from our agencies, we learned that, um, it, its data sources include credit agencies, um, but it does not try to collect things like bank information, credit information, um, phone logs, credit histories, health records, things that tend to have more constitutional or statutory privacy protections. Um, so I flagged that just because I think it's, it makes sense in the quickly evolving , uh, world of data being marketed back and forth and gathered by big companies through tools that didn't always exist for a long time, for us to make sure that when we're acting as a consumer in the city, um, that we know what kind of data we're purchasing and how that data is collected. So, I'm not convinced that the clear system never buys data that might be subject to some privacy protection, but I'm convinced enough that we need the contract, and, um, it's not worth voting it down. I'm really grateful for the, for the inquiry, and, um, we'll hope that we can keep our eyes on these kinds of contracts that are really about like mass compiled data about a lot of consumers and citizens. Uh, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Parity. Um, appreciate your due diligence on this. Madam Secretaries, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill zero nine two two, a bill for an ordinance submitting a vote to the registered electors of the City and County of Denver at the general election to be held November fourth, two thousand, twenty twenty-five, the question of granting a franchise to the Public Service Company of Colorado and approving a franchise agreement therefore. I am calling out this resolution to motion to postpone consideration until a date certain. The next regular council meeting, August eleventh. Madam Secretary, we'll call on the motion to postpone Council Resolution zero nine two two to a date certain. Councilmembers Albiquins?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Consalts Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heim?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Romero Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. The motion to postpone Council Bill zero nine two two to a date certain has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill zero nine eight seven, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed operating agreement with the Public Service Company of Colorado and Excel Energy Company for utility services at Denver International Airport in Council District eleven. I'm calling out this resolution for a motion to postpone consideration until a date certain. The next regular council meeting on August eleventh. Madam Secretary, we'll call on the motion to postpone Council Resolution zero nine eight seven to a date certain. Councilmembers Albiquins?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Consalts Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heim?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Romero Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer? Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. The motion to postpone Council Bill zero nine eight seven to a date certain has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill zero six eight six, a bill for an ordinance repealing certain subsections of Article Five of Chapter Twenty-seven Housing of the Revised Municipal Code relating to vehicle parking incentives and exemptions, approving, which will approve the modernizing parking requirements text amendment to Chapter Twenty-seven, revised with the Municipal Code citywide. Councilmember Watson, what would you like to do with Council Bill zero six eight six?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to take, uh, Council Bill two-five zero six eight six out of order, delaying consideration of the item until after the combined required public hearing for Council Bills two-five zero six eight four and two-five zero six eight five during the five-thirty P M. session this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Madam Secretary, we'll call on the motion to consider Council Bill zero six eight six out of order during the five-thirty P M. session. Councilmembers Albiquins?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Consalts Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heim?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Romero Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. The motion to consider Council Bill zero six eight six out of order has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill ten sixty, a bill for an ordinance designating the projects to be undertaken and funded with the proceeds of any general obligation bond, notes, or other obligations authorized by the voters at the November fourth, twenty twenty-five election. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill twenty-five ten sixty on the floor for final passage?
Yes, Council President. I'm happy to put Council Bill ten sixty on the floor for final passage.
It has been moved and seconded. Councilmember Lewis, your motion to amend.
Thank you. I move that Council Bill twenty-five one zero six zero will be amended in the following particulars. On page one, after road safety improvements, District Five, strike citywide street paving program. On page two, line two, strike four hundred and forty-six million, four hundred and twenty thousand, and replace with four hundred and forty-one million, four hundred and twenty thousand. On page three, following R A P. Taylor Senior Center, strike city facility improvements and electrification. On page three, line six, strike two hundred and fifty-two million, four hundred and thirty thousand, and replace with two hundred and forty-four million, four hundred and thirty thousand. On page three, line eight, strike for the funding of housing and sheltering facilities, and replace with to support projects that provide affordable housing and mitigate residential displacement. On page three, line eleven, strike forty-six million, three hundred thousand, and replace with fifty-nine million, three hundred thousand.
It has been moved and seconded. How many final members of council on the amendment to Council Bill ten sixty? Councilmember Parity?
Um, yeah, thank you so much, Madam President. Um, so this amendment is co-sponsored by Councilmembers Lewis, Torres, and myself, um, and it contains other features that make it unlikely that people in an existing neighborhood or whoever roots there, um, would ever be able to really make use of that housing because it doesn't sort of match, um, the community that's there already. And so that's been a learning curve for me on council, um, council, the sponsors of this amendment also have been meeting regularly about, um, how we think about the problem of displacement and the problem of housing supply together, um, and make sure that we're providing housing for everyone in the city in a way that doesn't cause, um, unnecessary uprooting of intact neighborhoods and communities. So, that's important to me, and I think this language, um, helps us be a little more specific about what the funding would go to, um, without making it so rigid that we can't, um, deploy it from within our housing department. And I see other lines is here if people have questions about this, um, but I appreciate the conversations among a lot of agencies, the mayor's office, um, co-sponsors and council members about making this happen. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you, Councilwoman Parity, um, summarizing the moves of dollars in order to try to bring back up the Affordable Housing Fund to forty-five million. Um, I am supportive of that, um, because we're adding that qualifier that it's also for mitigating displacement, which, um, when I think back to how my district experienced the recession in the mid-two thousands, uh, we were not thinking about how do we proactively protect communities and, um, try to keep residents in their homes as long as possible. Um, mitigating displacement, not just while we're infusing, um, investment dollars into neighborhoods, but also I think while things are changing so much around the city, um, becomes something important that is, um, uh, critical for every one of our districts. And so, um, it's something that I can, um, support, and I trust our host and nest teams to, to carry that forward and use those dollars in ways that really matter. Um, just, uh, because this one is amending the, um, companion ordinance, the subsequent amendments will be amending the individual, um, uh, bond bills. Um, I just want to share some of my, eh, thoughts about the bond, um, in general. Um, for me, it was really about mission-critical projects in ensuring every, every district had something residents had been asking for, fighting for for many years, and wanting to see done and completed in their district. That was really important. Um, and so I was probably one of the council members who, in the beginning, didn't necessarily want for this to be our biggest bond ever, uh, but in order for us to feel really confident that our residents were going to see something they resonated with, um, we needed to make sure certain projects were in there. Um, I still have several parks, intersections, bridges, city facilities, um, that are not in this bond. We can't fit everything into every bond, um, but those are for, I think, future capital improvement project fund and, uh, legacy fund discussions, um, that I know that will well, I'll be queuing up in our district in order to answer those questions of what did not get funded, um, and, and hope folks can see something they can get really excited about in each of these questions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Sawyer?
Madam President, I'm going to be a no.
Thank you. Mic is off.
Jeez. Okay, I got it. Swear to God, I'm not going to do that again. Um, thank you, Madam President. Um, I'm going to be a no on this amendment tonight. I really appreciate the work that, um, my fellow colleagues have done to try and pull this together, and I think that, um, if this passes, I'm, I'm still very supportive of the bond, and, and I don't have a problem with it. I think, um, it's just not my day, right? Um, but I want to just be very clear on why I'm saying no to this. Um, last week, when we moved eighteen million dollars out of the housing fund, um, to make it a total of thirty-two million dollars, I said I was comfortable moving out of that, um, bucket because that bucket was undefined. And, um, I really appreciate the amendment that clarifies a little bit as to what the projects are that will be included in that bucket, but at the end of the day, that bucket is still undefined, and we are replacing dollars from projects that are clearly defined, things like paving our roads, which our, our residents very much care about and which directly impact them, right? Things like Red Rocks, which is a huge revenue driver and essentially the only reason we have an art scene in Denver at all, because it subsidizes basically all of that. So, um, I'm comfortable with the amendment that I made last week, um, to remove the eighteen million dollars from this housing fund. I think having thirty-two million dollars in there is still a significant amount of money for investment. To be very honest with you, I'm not a hundred percent sold on even that thirty-two million dollars, and quite frankly, maybe we should have moved that and done thirteenth and fourteenth from Broadway to Colorado instead, because, um, I, I love Host, I love Nest, I think they are fantastic, but I don't think it is appropriate for city council members to use bond dollars for something like an undefined project. This is something the residents should be able to know exactly what these projects are when they are voting on them, and the fact that they don't know what these projects are and that the backstop is, well, any dollars that get expended would have to go through city council, that's not a good enough backstop for me. That's not my job as a city council member when it comes to using bond dollars. That is my job as a city council member when it comes to using general fund dollars, a hundred percent, but bond dollars are unique, and the projects that are associated with bond dollars should be clear to the voters. And so I know that housing is important. I agree that housing is important, and like I said, if this amendment passes, I'm okay with that, and we'll still be sending this to the voters, but I just want to go on the record as saying I'm very concerned about taking money from clear projects that have clear benefit to our community for something that is extremely, extremely nebulous and ill-defined in this bond. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis.
So, a few things. We were, worked really hard to get the fifty million dollars, um, to address the housing, um, specifically, um, because we- um because we heard from communities as we were not only in our meetings um with the mayor as well as um our conversations as council members um in the joint meetings that we had regarding the bond, that housing continuously came up, that people wanted to know what we were going to do to address the housing crisis. Um, and this was an opportunity for us to answer the question um that communities were asking. And it actually came directly from community with models that came directly from community um to say, this is an opportunity for us to look at social housing, this is an opportunity for us to look at land trust, this is an opportunity to just look at all types of housing opportunities in order to be able to answer the question. Um, I I will say on record because oftentimes the only context that folks have um are what council members say at this dice um that Red Rocks will still continue to bring in revenue because we're not um bankrupting and we're not moving the entire amount of those dollars. Um, and so I think it's really important, but housing is really important. And ensuring that people, especially in my district, aren't able to be are are not displaced um from the investments that we have with this bond um are really important. So I really appreciate the co-sponsors working on this amendment um and really listening when I shared um last week that this is um the amendment last week was actually pitting two of my neighborhoods against each other. Um, and this this does an op- this is an opportunity for me not have to decide which piece of my neighborhood or my community is most important um because everyone in District Eight is super important to me. Um, and so I would really appreciate the support from council members to move this forward. Um, because it does it does allow us to get thirteenth and fourteenth um funded, but it also allows us to have housing as well, and we need both. Um, we can carry that duality. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Madam Secretary will call on the amendment to Council Bill ten sixty. Councilmembers Albedrez?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Romero Campbell? Aye.
Sawyer?
Torres? Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary? Um, close the voting and announce the results. Twelve ayes. Twelve ayes, the amendment to Council Bill ten sixty has passed. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill ten sixty on the floor for final passage as amended?
I move that Council Bill twenty-five dash ten sixty be placed upon final consideration and do pass as amended.
Are there any comments by council, my members of council on ten sixty? Councilwoman Albedrez?
Um, I have some questions about the bond as a whole, is this a good time to do that?
Is this the final reading on ten sixty or will it be called out again? Is this the final on ten sixty? Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Albedrez.
Great, thank you. Um, I have a few questions for the Department of Finance. Um, how does the the conversation around? What we've been talking about a lot is we don't want to raise property taxes, and that's where part of our factors come in. And I'm curious, how does that interact with conversations with the state legislature around some of the property tax legislation and special session that may come regarding that? Is that factored in?
Sure, Nicole Dohey, Chief Financial Officer, City and County of Denver. Uh, thank you for your question, Councilwoman. Uh, so at the city, we have a dedicated six point five mils on our property tax that we use to repay our general obligation bonds. And so the discussions where the state discusses how they're changing assessment rates or how they're changing some policies around a special session does not impact our dedicated six and a half mils. It impacts property valuations, how they're assessed, but it does not impact the availability of that six and a half mils for this purpose.
Okay, um, another question I have is from the beginning, when we started talking about bonds in those early discussions, we were told it was going to be an eight hundred million dollar bond. And I'm curious, how did we get to saying that was the cap to nine fifty?
So when we first looked at it, we had some initial analysis and we're just thinking about how big the bond might be. Uh, the eight hundred that was initially proposed was not proposed as a cap, it was just a starting number for how we were putting it together. We continued to work with projecting our property taxes, looking at our debt structure, et cetera. And we recommended that nine fifty would be our cap that we could put forward without raising taxes on our residents.
Okay, um, I will say that because I was told there was an eight hundred million dollar cap, I did identify for much-needed projects in my district like the Alameda underpass. And at the same time, during subcommittees, we were told not to look at the value of these projects. And then the Denver Post just reported today that um the Eighth and Sixth Avenue bridges, which are got highly prioritized, were both rated fair, yet over fifty city bridges are in worse condition. So can you speak to how that prioritization happened?
If you'd like to speak more about the subcommittee process, happy to bring up Patrick Riley. If you'd like to speak particularly about the bridges, we can bring up our our city engineer Jim Potter to speak about those.
Prior about bridges was the question.
Great, thank you.
Dottie would be the answer.
Good afternoon, Council, Jim Potter, City Engineer with Dottie. Now, could you repeat your question to inform me, please?
So how were these bridges prioritized when the Denver Post just did an article today talking about how many other bridges are showing a higher need?
So I I did review the article from the Denver Post. I would agree that uh it shows data from a structural index perspective. So to come back on infrastructure and prioritization in general for our bridge assets, we not only look at structural index, which is a number that a bridge is assigned based upon its um inspection results that come out of the National Bridge Inspection. We do that biannually for our large infrastructure like Sixth Avenue, Eighth Avenue. Um, when we look at prioritization, that is one of the factors that we would look at. It doesn't mean that a bridge that is rated poor, for example, is unsafe. It would mean that fair, if I want to go back and give a little bit of background on what structural index means, it's a scale of zero to nine. And nine being a brand-new piece of infrastructure, it's a bridge that you just installed. And a fair rating is below a satisfactory rating. So in in essence, what we're saying, and that's about a five on a scale of zero to nine, what we're saying is that you have a C average, if you want to look at it as a grade point average, you have about a C average on that piece of infrastructure. And you're approaching something that's the at the end of its service life, so something that we need to consider. But when we go over the overall prioritization, we would look at things like safety, um, the criteria that we use kind of to do our critical infrastructure maintenance and all the rest of that is structural index, however, the safety is a critical factor. We have what we would call kind of criticality, think about that more like consequence of failure. What happens if the infrastructure were to fail? How does it impact our residents, the community, what's the functionality look like for our city and the network for transportation? Um, all those have to be considered for us to think through what's the best asset to put into a prioritized list to move forward with, to invest in. We also have the size of an asset that is critical to think about. We have a large list of um, I'll call them un- other liabilities in our bridge program. They're the largest pieces of infrastructure that we really have very limited ways to address. Um, Park Avenue Biduct is a good example. Sixth Avenue, Eighth Avenue are on that list as well. So if you think back to the beginning of the Elevate issuance for in twenty seventeen, we did a um investment into the Park Avenue Biduct. We did rehabilitation to that piece of infrastructure because the bond was the best way for us to take that maintenance and the cost that we needed to do to really invest in that to get it to go in the right direction from an asset perspective, it was important for us to do it at that time.
So specifically, these bridges were prioritized.
August fourth, twenty twenty five.
What exactly? There's more traffic, there was more damage in other places. Is there a specific reason?
I I think it's all the points that I mentioned, however, economic impact of failure is part of a consequence of failure. So we have to look again at all of those things that are on the list to understand what the big picture is for each bridge in our city. Each one has a unique story, they're not, and nothing's really an apples-to-apples comparison. So the impact on the daily residents and their lives, the economic impacts, those are all part of that consequence of failure, what happens. The use of these bridges is, I like to think of it as Sixth Avenue and Eighth Avenue are our gateways to our central core and our downtown in and out from an east-west perspective. For our north-south, it's the Broadway, Spear, Lincoln kind of corridor over on the other side, where we're making an investment in our critical infrastructure as well, in the two bridges over Cherry Creek in that location. And I think together those really, to me, speak to how you can make a vibrant city out of making sure you've taken care of your assets that you have and you own today.
Okay, um, still have some questions, but I guess that's good enough for now. And then um I had a question for CPD last week, is anyone from CPD here this week? Still no, okay, well, my question was um about the large area development plan that would be triggered if there was a Burnham Yard development, but I guess I won't get to ask that today. Um, I do have another question for the Department of Finance. I was trying to dig through some of the information this weekend, and I was looking back at twenty twenty-four. And the proposed budget that we approved for twenty twenty-four was one point seven six billion. And I also found in the annual comprehensive financial report from twenty twenty-four, the actual revenue was one point eight three billion. And I'm confused how there was a budget shortfall and we overspent the budget when we actually had more income than we actually projected. When we're seeing that projections, we're saying we were going to make less than we actually did.
Sure, and thank you for that question. Uh, so the way it works when we put the budget together is that is the appropriation passed by this council that we're able to spend in that year. When you're looking at our comprehensive annual financial report, that is really our accounting statements. And so some of the adjustments that we make on an accounting basis don't completely align with the appropriation basis that we budget on. And so that small difference that you highlighted is largely related to some accounting rules and how we account for our expenditures in a formal manner.
Okay, I wouldn't say that was small. And also, uh, my aide found this report on Saturday, but as of today, it's been taken down. Is there a reason why it was removed?
I'm not sure which report you're referring to, but very happy.
Twenty twenty-four comprehensive uh report, annual comprehensive report.
I will check with my team, that surprises me, we make that publicly available. It was approved by the Auditor's Office last month and formally posted. So I'll go back and check with the team to make sure that the Controller's Office has that posted.
Okay, thank you. And then how does the city plan to absorb the new operating and maintenance costs associated with these new projects once they're complete?
So we continue to build our budget each year. Um, as we've been speaking about, many of the projects this year are really focused on maintaining the assets we have and ensuring that they're in state of good repair. So for example, we think about some of these expenditures are really us defraying ongoing maintenance costs over time that we think will be a positive for our overall budget. We'll continue to work with agencies over the next six years as this plan is implemented, to plan for these assets coming online, think about their staffing and provision for their maintenance.
Okay, and are we going to continue to depend on bonds to do our regular maintenance for our infrastructure?
I think the way that we thought about this bond and prior bonds is it's an opportunity to take on some of our larger maintenance projects that we have that may not be well-placed to be pulled from our annual C I P. We continue to think about the bonds as a complementary to our C I P where we fund a lot of our maintenance. And in this case, there are really some large projects that are critically, critically important to our city uh that we think it's a great opportunity to fund them in bonds now, uh so that we don't have drag on our C I P going forward to fund these projects.
Okay, and how long do you think it'll be if this passes that we would go before getting another bond, requesting another bond?
So this is a six-year bond, we've structured the bond and the repayment uh such that in six years, we think we would have more capacity based on our projections to do an additional bond. We'll continue to budget C I P each year as part of our annual budget process.
Okay, and as we're discussing the city's financial strategy, including the proposed bond and simultaneously knowing that there's upcoming layoffs, I wanted to ask for clarity how personnel decisions and recent changes to civil service rules intersect with our long-term financial planning.
So we're continuing to work through our financial plan as we do and build our budget for the upcoming year. I expect we'll be with you all in the coming weeks, uh digging in more on our plans around budget and some details on our strategy.
I appreciate that, but I was also wondering why we're executing layoffs now before council has a full and transparent conversation about the projected two hundred million dollar shortfall and our actual twenty twenty-six budget. Is there a reason why we haven't waited to have that conversation during the regular budget cycle?
So I think, again, we'll be engaging with you more on this, but what that allows us to do is provide um severance and uh payment and health insurance to folks as part of that process. And we'll be looking forward to engaging with you on that as part of the budget process.
All right, thank you, Council President, that's all I have.
Yeah, Councilmember and colleagues, this is ten sixty, so this is the big um companion ordinance for the bond. This would be your um opportunity to make any comments on the bond. The next part of the council meeting will be amendments um following, and ten sixty won't be called out again. Um, Councilmember Torres?
Thank you so much. Um, just wanted to share, um, there are, so there's a great Denver Bridges um dashboard uh that Dottie's made available, it's it's on the city website. Um, there are eighty-four bridges that serve um and are interconnected to Council District Three. Um, there are, there are a couple that are closed, they're so structurally deficient that they're closed. Why are they not on this bond? This is an important way for us to think about the variety of ways that we look to funding sources in order to try to address some of these um infrastructure projects. Um, one, we're working with Monmouth Flood District to get that replaced, it has to go to the state. There are others that have to go to railroad conversations. Um, nothing is just as um straightforward as as other bridges. And so I, we've been back and forth with Dottie about why these two bridges, why now, why not others? We were actually able to include the Cherry Creek bridges over this. It was the concern that Denver Health might be um uh disadvantaged or um uh affected by those bridges potentially being out. We think about any of those things and um and and having to prioritize for what's the moment um that we need that. But I have other bridges on here, as do most of us on council, um that are either closed or in poorer condition but have different routes for trying to get addressed. And so just wanted to share that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Parity?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just, thinking about the bond globally, like municipal debt is a complicated thing. I do not have a finance degree, some people here in the audience do. Um, and I want to address a little bit of, I I've heard some like murmurings um out there about like, why cities even do this? Like, why are we taking on debt? Um, we worry about debt, most of us have it in our households, et cetera. Um, and one reason is that we have these property tax dollars that are um only for that purpose, right? And so um it's a resource that we would not be able to just reallocate or use in a different way. Um, and another reason is because um this is sort of how cities have raised money for a very long time. And so right now, we are still um paying back large projects that we've built over a long period of time. Um, and so if we suddenly stopped doing bond issuances and um we're waiting until we had enough property tax that we could sort of like bank it and pay for large things, we would be waiting like twenty years to do any big projects, like it just doesn't work that way. Also, I'm not even sure, this is where we get beyond what I understand, but um I don't know that we would even be allowed to um keep those, that tax money in the bank for very long because we're here in the Tabor State. And so I'm not so sure that we could sit on those dollars until they accumulated enough to start doing large projects. So I just want to say, for those of us who do not have finance degrees, um for some of you guys, you're like keeping straight faces laughing at me because it sounds so obvious. Um, but it's not always, I think, to the public, like, why are we taking out debt? And it's just, it's just the time horizon of how we pay to do big things. The other um perhaps obvious thing that I just like to say over and over again because it has been so stark to me um since I got into this role is that we are under-resourced in Denver and we are stretching all the time to cover the things that we need. And that's just a reality, and it's about to get far worse if we start seeing the kind of funding cliffs that are being threatened from the federal level, like and a lot of that money is transit money, quite frankly. So um this would not exactly be the time for us to um give up on the way that we can pay for or the physical things that we need in the city. I wish that this package was a lot more focused on missing, meeting basic needs. I wish that it included um more housing and shelter, more that was oriented towards climate change. So I have my criticisms of the package. Um, but that said, having been through this process, um, I, we need the resources, we need to invest in our city however we can. Um, and this is a piece of the very large puzzle of all the funding that we did that with. And so because of the things in it that I consider incredibly crucial for the city, um, I will be voting on it myself as a voter. Um, and I will be voting yes on it tonight. Um, despite, you know, I might have redirected some of the money a little bit differently, given what I think that we're facing in the city and how much on that basic human need we have. Um, but that said, it's not something we can afford to just not do right now. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis?
Thank you. Um, so I am by and large pleased by both the numbers and the types of District Eight projects included in the vibrant bond. At the onset of the bond process, I dug through past bond cycles to figure out what amount in funding District Eight had received. In short, it wasn't impressive in terms of the total dollar amount or the types of projects that were funded. District Eight received a total of sixty-eight million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars for the last two bond cycles, which funded forty-six projects. This may seem like a lot to you all, but it isn't in the grand scheme of things. The total represented twelve percent of the total bond package. The total represented 12% of the total bond package that won, packages, excuse me, $1.2 billion, which while close, is not an equal distribution of the bond across the 13 council offices, let alone an equitable distribution in light of the specific pattern of historic disinvestment in the neighborhoods that make up District 8. The low dollar amount is even worse when you consider the types of projects that were funded over the past two bond cycles of those 46 projects. 19 were simple road pavings, and additional 12 were improvements for the Department of Safety, including the construction of a new police station and improvements to the fire stations. Outside of the safety and road projects, the highest single project amount was $7,465,439 for a homeless shelter out on 48th. While these projects fulfill specific functions, they are not the kinds of investment that our communities have been asking for for decades. The new bond and the items in it represents the best chance in at least eight years for District 8 to actualize on the top types of investments that community has been asking for. I do note that we are still short several big asks from community, most notably a recreation center in East Colfax and a library in Northfield. However, my council office and I will be working to make sure that these are included in future city plans. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilperson Mira Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to highlight a few things from Southeast Denver that I think are in the bond and much needed. And like many bond processes before and for this particular one, I think we all have a very long list of things that still need to be completed. And I know within Southeast Denver, there are still many things that people have asked for and that we have and will keep our eye on. In particular, the Eisenhower Park improvements for the pool. We hear about this often and we know that it's much, that it's much needed and having the opportunity to have a baby pool that is actually functional is a big deal. And the non-sexy stuff is the pump that needs to be taken care of. And I'm super thrilled that that is going to be addressed. The High Line Canal is just a gem within our city and, and people are on it every day. We have so many people that travel on and, and also have their recreation on the High Line Canal. But crossing at some of our, across our major streets are really critical. And so I'm really excited that that has been included on the bond. A big one for us is a Southeast Recreation Center and planning for a skate park. I did bring the binder that was shared. This is in our office and shared by the former councilwoman Kendra Black, who with a lot of other community partners, Kaylee Bauer, Alejandro Sadio, and the boys that you all heard from yesterday or last week, Porter and Ryder, who have been working on this skate park forever, or at least for forever. Their lives are big now. So important. And so thank you. And it's not only just for Southeast Denver. This is going to be open to the entire city. And that is something that's incredibly accessible. Being able to plan forward for Recreation Center means that this community, that Southeast Denver, that our community, is going to have a place that kids can go, that seniors can be. And this has not been, we don't have a place for, for kids in our community to just hang out. We do have the library and I love it, but this is really going to be additive to the, to Southeast Denver and to the community. And then I'm also extremely proud that being able to partner with Councilman Cashman on the Evans Corridor projects. This was a corridor study that has been completed. There are lots of plans moving forward, but the opportunity to be able to cross Evans safely, so incredibly important. So again, I think that we have been hearing from community about safe crossings, about recreation, about the High Line Canal. I'm so excited that that is going to be included. But there are other important projects across the city. I've had the opportunity to work and play and, and to be a part of and know other neighborhoods throughout the city. And there are so many needed projects that are in this bond. Again, the tip of the iceberg, but so needed. And I'm excited for those to be able to come to fruition as well. Anyway, that's my, I will be supporting this this evening. I will be supporting this vote this evening. I have, again, if you want to see some of the letters from the kids, we have this. It's awesome. But just wanted to, again, show my support for this and then also as we kick off a new bond. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this bond is, is as good an example as I've ever seen. Not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This bond is not perfect. There's no way it can be. Before we even started these discussions, the city had a capital improvements list in the $7 billion range. We simply do not tax ourselves on an annual basis enough to keep current with all of the city's capital needs. So if you don't like the Sixth and Eighth Avenue Bridge being on the list and decide to vote against the bond, then you don't get Evans Avenue. If you're not happy about Red Rocks Improvements being on the list, you don't get Improvements to Betcher Hall for the Colorado Symphony. It goes on and on and on. Again, there, I, there are more improvements that I would like to see made in District 6. As happy as I am with some Rec Center improvements, as happy as I am with the Evans Corridor beginnings that will be taking place. But again, we've got way, way, way more needs than we're going to meet with this bond. So I look at this bond and, you know, we've been getting a lot of emails recently and phone calls that we're not devoting enough to affordable housing. And as my colleagues have said, I, I agree with that. I'd like to see more money for affordable housing. If you're unhappy with that and you vote against this bond, we're losing almost $50 million in affordable housing, which, and again, I go back to what former councilwoman Keneet said to me years ago when we opened an affordable housing project of 53 units. And I said, what in the name of God is 53 units going to do for our housing need? And she said, well, ask the 53 families that move into those units. 45, $50 million is going to build a heck of a lot of units. And again, I appreciate the amendment sponsors' attention to trying to ensure that those dollars do maximum good. So I will be moving this bond forward and I will be voting for it. Again, I, I look at the list and to not, to not build what's on that list makes absolutely no sense to me. I can join you all in arguments. Maybe we should pull this one and put something else on. Glad to have those discussions. You may be right, but there's some real good projects on the list that we've got to build. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. We have seven more colleagues in the queue and we have start public comment in seven minutes. Councilmembers, I don't want to rush you. Are you okay if we go after?
Totally fine. Thank you. I don't want to rush you because this is too big of, $950 million is too big to make you all convinced.
Go back to my skirt. The required public hearing on Council Bill 0917 concerning the organization and creation of the Broadway Denver Central Improvement District in the City of County Denver, creating the District Advisory Board and appointing the initial members thereof and approving the 2025 and 2026 work plan and budget thereof and making appropriations for the budget years 2025 and 2026. On Council Bill 20, on Council Bill 0802, changing the zoning classification for 2501 East 48th Avenue in Elia Sancia. On Council Bill 0902, changing the zoning classification for 2420 West 14th Avenue in Lincoln Park. And required public hearing on Council Bills 0684, amend the Denver zoning code by repealing minimum vehicle parking requirements. And 0685, amend Chapter 59 zoning of the Denver Revised Municipal Code by repealing minimum vehicle parking requirements. City Council will provide a half-hour general public comment session to hear from public on city matter, except for any matter that is legally required for a public hearing. The general public comment session will begin at 5:00. All right. Producer, are you ready to go into public comment? Thank you. Tonight's session is being interpreted into Spanish. Sam or Jasmine, would you please introduce yourself and let our viewers know how to enable translation on their devices?
Hello, yes, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Sam Guzman from the CLC. And along with my colleague Jasmine, we'll be interpreting today's meeting into Spanish. Allow me a quick minute to give instructions in Spanish on how to access interpretation. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Samuel Guzman de la CLC. Y actualmente con mi colega Jasmine, estamos interpretando la reunión de hoy en español. Si se une con nosotros virtualmente a través de Zoom, por favor, busque pantalla o en su teléfono celular la opción que dice interpretación, un icono de globo, oprima ese botón y de ahí seleccione la opción de escuchar en español. Si se une con nosotros presencialmente ahorita en la cámara, por favor, busque hacia el fondo a la derecha y encontrará un asistente que le podrá dar audífonos para escuchar en español. Si se une con nosotros es vital para comentario público, por favor, sepa que tendrá tiempo adicional para que sus comentarios sean interpretados. Thank you very much and muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Sam. Welcome to the General Public Comment Session of August 4th, 2025. City Council provides a half-hour general public comment session to hear from the public on city matters, except for any matter that are scheduled to have a public hearing. The Denver City Council has a pilot program that welcomes Denver's youth to speak at General Public Comment on the first Monday of the month. Anyone can still sign up to speak. However, on these Mondays, those 18-year, 18-years-old and under will be given preference. To maximize time for public comment, council will not offer comments or responses from the dais. Council members or staff may contact speakers following their comment if they raised matters that lend themselves to follow. All speakers should begin by stating their names. Each person will have three minutes to speak. For those participating in person, when called upon, please come to the podium. A timer on the presentation monitor will display your remaining time. For those participating virtually, when called upon, please wait until you are promoted to speaker. Then accept the promotion, turn on your camera if you have one, and your microphone. You will see the timer on your screen counting down. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech, direct your comments to council as a whole, and refrain from individual or personal attacks, including disparaging other speakers' motives. First up, we have Max Peterson. Is Max Peterson here? Next up, we have Bryant Peterson. Next up, we have Lisa Mammel. Is Lisa Mammel online? Next up, we have Jesus Legra Payayu online. Who needs Spanish interpretation? Is Jesus online? Go ahead, producer, and promote Jesus. Jesus? Jesus? No, Jesus. Spencer? Barringer?
Yeah.
What? From the updated list that Christian sent? Going on the updated list that Christian sent? Did I skip some, producer? Alyssa, did I skip some?
Yes, Spencer Barringer emailed Christian. He's not under 18, so we have to move him down on the list.
Okay. Lydia Lopez? Okay. Go ahead. Okay.
Hi, my name is Lydia and I'm a youth member of Movimiento Poder and a youth woman committed to the well-being of my community. Today I speak as a citizen of Denver and, and as a young person and as a part of a generation that wants to be heard and taken into account. I strongly support the need for local authorities to work hand-in-hand with young people. I appreciate the Denver, the Denver City Council and the mayor that have recognized the importance of supporting youth. But it's not enough to talk about us without us. It's time, it's time to stop guessing what we need and instead sit at a table with youth leaders and listen to our voices and build real solutions together. I have experience in the flesh how many decisions are made without consulting those who are affected, who, of, of those who are affected directly. We need spaces where youth are listened to, where our ideas are not only considered but become actions. I appreciate the opportunity to express my voice and I ask you with all due respect that this advice takes a step forward and creates direct channel of youth participants that, that they meet with us and that they listen to our realities and that together we build a city where we all have voices and a vote, and a vote, sorry.
You're doing great. Take your time.
It's time for youth people to be an active part in decisions that affect our lives. Yeah? Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Hung Deng in person. Next up, we have Tira Coman. Is Tira here?
Hi.
Hi.
Well, I was going to say my name, but you've already said it. The reason why I'm here is because I'm a taxpaying citizen and I have been my whole life. I've worked for as long as I could work. Me and my three kids are now homeless because I was laid off. I was told within five days. Our rent is late. We've been sleeping in our car. I have exhausted all funds, all help, all costs. The state of Colorado has not helped me or my babies. We get the runaround. We call connecting Colorado. I've came here to court. I've asked, I've begged, I've pleaded. We drove around for hours the past week trying to find somewhere comfortable. Too late. I pay taxes. I pay taxes and I can't get any help. And the state waited. They waited and they waited until we got put out a sheriff's notice. And all I get is, is an electronic system before they can help us and they pull it by a lottery. But we have the But we have the money and you guys are not helping us. We rather a family of girls on the streets. Shelters are not accepting us. There's no room. There's no hotel vouchers. What are we supposed to do? I am in my car. I pay a car note for. I'm waiting on unemployment. We're getting laid off, so no jobs are hiring right away. I'm a medical assistant slash medical office admin. I went to school. I worked hard to prevent me and my kids from being homeless and there's still nothing in Colorado, no help, no nothing. What I'm asking for today is for help, not just for me, but other people like me who maybe can't sleep in their cars. What about mothers who have to live on the streets with their babies? It's not fair. So I'm asking for some type of assistance and for more help in Colorado. I could probably go and get a job and figure this out, but in the meantime, me and my kids are on the streets, literally. And what about other people who can't do that? So if you guys have a say, I'm really praying because homelessness has not changed. It's getting swept under the rug and you can't keep track of it if you're not helping everybody. Colorado needs to do better because you're taking our money as taxpaying citizens, but you're not helping us housing-wise.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Teresa Nguyen, virtually. Teresa, if you'll accept the promotion.
Hi, thank you for your time and thanks to Christian from the city for getting me registered through Zoom. Yeah, I wish we prioritized affordable housing a lot more than we do in the city. I wish we prioritized transit a lot more for folks who don't have other means to get around the city. The issue I wanted to talk about today has to do with transit. My name's Teresa Nguyen. I'm a current resident of Capitol Hill and a former resident of Swansia. I don't wanna ride a bike and I don't identify as a cyclist, even though it aligns with my values and how I wish I could live my life. I'm too scared to bike on Denver streets. But here's the other thing, I work a stressful job, but it's mostly sanitary. So when I'm done with work, the last thing I wanna do is sit in a car in traffic. So I mostly just stay home. I rarely go downtown, even though I live relatively close and I love the city. But there is a person in my household who does go downtown every day, and that is my spouse. He works there and instead of him driving a car through traffic in Capitol Hill to downtown, he's opted to bike, which terrifies me. So I wait for him to text me in the morning and then when he leaves work, because twice a day I worry if he'll make it there alive or if that's the day he'll be hit by a vehicle. This is my plea to the city. We need protected bike lanes in the section where the city can have the biggest impact in getting people who are able to bike to downtown. That is Thirteenth Street and Fourteenth Street through Capitol Hill to downtown. I drive this stretch regularly and even as a driver, these multi-lane, one-way raceways are stressful to beat on. I don't wanna park my car in these streets. I don't wanna bike or walk there either. So I just don't visit any of those businesses along that corridor. If we could get this project connected through downtown, I wouldn't have to fear for my partner or the many Denverites who would use this route daily. And I would feel more comfortable riding my own bike and visiting downtown businesses. I think it would make a world of difference and the only entity that can get bike lanes done is the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Bart Berger. Next up, we have Lori Cagan.
With Amanda Sawyer, and I'm a member of congregation Rodeo Shalom. I'm here representing Together Colorado and specifically the Denver organizing chapter. I'm here to speak to the Denver's strategic relationship to Excel. And we focus maybe too much on the franchise agreement. The real point is what's our total relationship to Excel at this pivotal point in time? We've heard from the mayor's office today that negotiations are ongoing this week toward a binding resolution or a companion agreement, and we thank you for that. And we thank you for your rigorous week in questioning Excel. We urge the council to not accept anything less than a binding resolution, a binding companion agreement that commits to specific actions, outcomes, and consequences for non-performance. We've offered guideposts against which to measure a revised companion agreement. You should have received those last week and if you didn't, email, excuse me, email Together Colorado and we'll get you another copy. The first area is strong community engagement and feedback. It's too late to have that upfront, but there's plenty of room for community engagement over the next five years plus in terms of oversight advisory groups. And this would be in addition to any groups that D Dig implements. And most importantly, a reporting mechanism, back to you, the city council. Two, specific actionable projects addressing community concerns. It may not be time to get all of them specifically in the agreement, but we laid out a template where there should be mutually agreed design, stakeholder engagement. They should be completed within X number of days, implemented and evaluated within so many days. The data should be shared with you, which hasn't been an easy thing sometimes, and they should commit to collecting and sharing data. At a minimum, projects are to be developed in each of the following areas. Reducing energy burden upon low-income, leap-eligible individuals, especially with the loss of federal funding. Increasing the number of service options available to households with health or medical issues, especially at times of high heat or deep cold. And then other projects as defined by community input. A big area, number three, is financial commitments on Excel's part beyond the revenues received from ratepayers. Oh my gosh, I'm out of time. Thank you so much, Lori. We thank you for your attention to this.
Thank you. Next up, Alan Lee. Alan? Next up, we have Moshi Cornfield. Moshi? Next up, we have Solomon Geigl. Solomon Geigl?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Yeah, thank you for your time today. My name is Solomon Geigl. I've been a Denver resident for fourteen years. Currently, I live and own a home in the Capitol Hill neighborhood. I work downtown, work in an office five days a week, and I commute every day, basically, by bike. I'm also a board member of the Capitol Hill United Neighborhoods. Like so many others on this issue, my issue with the bond stems from the fact that the projects chosen don't match the survey results and the community input. After, after so many others have expressed the same, I feel kind of like a broken record at times expressing this, but still I feel that it needs to be said. Although we had some of the highest rates of community participation, are the densest neighborhood in Denver, have the highest percentage of residents without a car, we received virtually nothing from the Go Bond and more importantly, nothing for bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Last week, I was in a meeting with Mayor Johnson, along with a lot of other RNO leaders throughout the city. When I brought up similar concerns, he told me that the reason why no bike infrastructure is included in the bond is because fifty miles are going to be included in the next year's budget. This was the first that I had ever heard of it and he wasn't able to provide any more details about it or how that might look. And obviously, that still has to go through a full approval process of its own. It's so critical, like so many of others have said, especially in these dense neighborhoods, to have connected bike lanes, not just more bike lanes that are disconnected from the neighborhoods around them, but actual connections from downtown. So you're not put out on a one-way such as when you're going down the bike lane on Fourteenth and literally in front of City Hall that ends up on Grant Street, a three-lane, one-way with no directions. That's just one of the many examples there. So currently, as it stands, I will not be supporting the bond and will be voting no unless some major changes are made. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kate Fritz.
Good, oops, see, that's not gonna work. Good afternoon, council president, members of council. My name is Kate Fritz. I'm the executive director of the Denver Mountain Parks Foundation. In transparency, I'm also a mayoral appointee to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I am not here on behalf of the mayor or of crab. For over twenty years, the Denver Mountain Parks Foundation has been here haranguing with you and your predecessors about the importance of the Denver Mountain Parks and the importance of the cultural institutions in Denver. And they are vital to the health of our communities and for the, they positively impact our communities and the income in our communities. I'm here today mostly to thank you all for your support, for your support of the mountain parks, for your support of the Echo Lake Lodge, which will be a hundred years old next year. It was identified in the two thousand eight Denver Mountain Parks Master Plan as one of the stars. It is one of the crown jewels and the center of gravity within the Denver Mountain Parks. The renovation and adaptive reuse of this location will provide year-round recreational opportunities for everyone in Denver. This was specifically called out in the two thousand twenty-three. I butcher this all the time. It is the Outdoor Adventure and Alternative Sports Strategic Plan, which is a mouthful. The Echo Lake Lodge matters, as do all of the cultural institutions. They're not, they're easy to forget because Denver is faced with so many challenges. But the cultural institutions provide the residents who live here and provide the people who visit here what makes Denver special. They provide the opportunity for something other than just going to work. They provide something that makes our lives richer and they matter and they are important. And so we thank you very much for your support of them. We thank you for your service on city council. And you can look forward to seeing me more, to harangue more about the importance of the Denver Mountain Parks at a time to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Calab Ben, Calab Ben? Calab Ben? Spencer Barringer? Thanks, Spencer.
Hi, I'm Spencer. I'm here to talk about Benedict Fountain Park. It's a park on Twentieth Avenue in between Pennsylvania and Grant. It's like a triangular park. I'm, I came here because I've never seen the water on at the fountain, at the fountain park. And I talked to some, it's a pretty popular area. Lots of people hang around that fountain, especially during warm days. So the other day I talked to some of the people there and they said that it hasn't been on for at least three and a half years. It just seems weird that the fountain isn't on at Benedict Fountain Park. One of the older individuals that I spoke to there said that the playground had recently been redone and there were some new benches put in, but the picnic tables were taken out. And I guess some like local students come there in between or for like their lunch break or for playtime. And he said that they have to all sit on the ground to eat their lunches there. So his comment was that maybe we shouldn't put the picnic tables, which used to be there, back there as well. So that's what I came here for. Pretty sure just hopefully we can turn that water back on, make the park more beautiful and then add the picnic tables so that the kindergarteners don't have to eat on the ground.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Nancy Burke.
Let me check if I get to speak. I'm not gonna be able to speak though, more than likely unless if people...
Good afternoon, council president, council members. My name is Nancy Burke. I'm the CEO of the St. Francis Center, also a member of the Homeless Leadership Council. And we're here tonight to talk about the GEO bonds. We are urging you to support the eleven point four million dollars in investment for ADA upgrades and accessibility improvements. We can't tell you how challenging it is to tell a member of the, of our public and our fellow community members that we don't have the facilities to serve their needs and we have no option for them. Many of our guests state to us that they frequently feel that based on their disability status that they are left out and in fact, more endangered than another person who might be trying to make it on the street. We also encourage you to support the thirty-two million dollar in affordable housing because we would love to see all those people who need accessibility accommodations and additional resources in housing where they're safe and able to contribute to the, to the community, where they can give back, where oftentimes people volunteer. This is a critical part of that system that's being designed to flow people through an incident of homelessness, which many of us here every day is one paycheck away for some individuals to help them get back to a resource for housing and to be safe. We also applaud the use of funds for land acquisition and to be ahead of the sector so that we can be thoughtful about where housing is and how it's configured across the community and the use of multiple, multiple facilities. So combining housing with other resources that community members use is a tremendous asset and we also applaud that. And we thank you for the hard work you've done in this area.
Next up, we have Brandy Majors, virtually. Brandy, go ahead.
Yes, one second. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can. Go ahead.
One second, I just gotta pull my, my little thing I had brought up.
Oh, lady chick.
Oh, it's funny. Do you have a second? I just had it. One second. This is it. All right. I wanna talk about the Denver Zoo. What really disgusts me is this whole plan to expand the Denver Zoo with some eighty acre and Latino cultural addition. Eighty acres, let that sink in. Eighty acres dedicated to highlighting Latino culture. And before anyone twists my words, yes, it's beautiful to celebrate culture, but where is the eighty acres of black culture? Where is the dedicated, the dedication to black excellence, black nature, conservationists, black scientists, black indigenous connection to land and animals? Where is the, where is the mention? Where is the words are mentioned at all? It makes me sick to see how these institutions jump to expand anything else before they ever look around and say, hey, wait, we, we built all of this land and soaked in black labor, black pain, black innovation, black environmental stewardship, and we have zero space honoring that. They jump to accommodate whoever is convenient at the moment. The Latino cultural expansion is only, is only proof that they can find money, the space, and the public approval where, where they want to. But for black people, it's always an excuse, an apology, a delay, tactic, a symbolic sign in the gift shop with a panther on it, you know? It's the case in point, look at the, look at the median and children, you know what I mean? I want to know why no one is fighting for eighty acres to teach kids about African wildlife, connections to black history, to show the cultural significance of lions, elephants, crocodiles, the rituals, stories of these animals, our spiritual stories, our hunting and teaching traditions, or black American contributions to animal rights movements? Why is there no black cultural wing educating about the Tuskegee scientists studying zootic? Or black ranchers and cowboys for Colorado's own history? The truth is, black culture is only good enough for them when it's profitable, like music nights or jazz mansion, maybe N L K theme event to say, look how diverse we are, but never enough to invest in land or exhibit or even our people with our names on them. So yes, I'm disgusted. I'm disgusted because this, this proves... because this, this proves, again, as usual, in Colorado.
Okay, Brandy, that's your time. Next up we have Therese Howard.
Good job.
Therese. Next up we have Shane Witstruck. Shane. Next up we have Eric Gross. Next up we have Jessi Paris. Recording in progress.
Yes, good evening, members of council. I was watching at home, I was in the council chambers. My name is Jesse LaShawn Paris, and I'm a representative for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Committee for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the Northeast Denver Residents Council, Frontline Black News, Shabaka's Black Experience and Has, and I reside at the Legacy Lofts in Council, Darryl Watson's District of District Nine, the fine District Nine. I agree with everything that previous speakers have said, especially Brandy Majors, my spouse. You are not prioritizing FBA foundational black Americans in the city, and you haven't been for quite a while now. This mayor needs to go. He has put us in a $250 million shortfall. Now he wants you to approve a bond of almost a billion dollars that we're not gonna be able to pay back. The city's already in debt, and he's putting us even more in debt. But this is what you voted for in 2023, so you only have yourselves to blame. It's the same guy that said that he was down to get arrested for the illegal immigrants, then backtracked it after that hearing that we had to pay for almost a million dollars for his legal defense because he wants to keep this a sanctuary city. But like we always ask, where is the sanctuary for black people? In this country, in the city, in the state, or in this world? It doesn't seem to exist. But you want to prioritize the newcomers and put them over us instead of the people that actually built this city, built this country, built this state, and built this world. It is shameful, but this is what you voted for, Denver. So now we're gonna be two million, two billion, what it be, dollars in debt if you approve this gold bond. And this guy is just gonna go away sky free like most career politicians. He is planning on making his way up the ladder after running Denver into the dirt. But this again, this is what you voted for. Y'all didn't want me, y'all didn't want nobody that was gonna prioritize actual citizens in the city and actual black people, foundational black Americans, the citizens of America, slavely freedmen. You wanted the white boy, and that's what y'all got. So I don't have no pity for you at this point. If you want to go into all this debt and have it where our kids are gonna have to pay back all this debt, that's on you. But I'm not supporting it, and I advise you not support it either. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I did not think I was gonna be able to speak, especially with 22 people signed up to speak. So that was a sigh of relief. All right, I'll see y'all on the general public hearings.
Recording in progress. We look forward to hearing from you again. I'm thanking for attending. Council will now reconvene from our earlier session. We're gonna finish comments by members of council on Council Bill 1060. Councilmember Sawyer, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I managed to turn my microphone on before I started speaking this time, so we got that going for us. I, I, before I start with my comments, I want to acknowledge the staff that has worked incredibly hard on this bond package over the last seven months. You all were asked to do the impossible, and we did not make it easy on you, but you did pull off the impossible. And I want to thank you and acknowledge the sleepless nights and the missed, all the things, spring break, birthdays, dinners, all the things that you missed. I know you missed them because that's what it's like for us as council members too. And so I want to just acknowledge all of you and the hard work that you did in pulling together the bond package that you have put in front of us today. So thank you very much for that. I had a lot of concerns when I first started hearing about this bond package and when we started with the community meetings. And, you know, I think Councilmember Cashman probably said it best, no one is gonna get everything they want in this bond, right? We have $7 billion in capital needs and less than a billion dollars in this bond package. So recognizing that, I think the question is, you know, is this the right mix and balance of things that our residents can look at and make a determination of whether or not they support it? Because I truly believe my job as a city council member is not to sit up here and block access to the ballot for something. It is to make sure that it is as good as it can possibly be so that you, the voters, get to decide on whether to support this or not. And I hope you do. I will be voting yes on it. I'm thrilled at where we have come. I know that it was difficult to get here, but I'm thrilled with where we have gotten. I'm proud of the projects that are in there. I know some of them are really not sexy. Bridges are not fun and interesting, but they are necessary for us to continue to function as a city. And I think that we've found a good balance of some projects that are really important to our residents, like 13th and 14th. So I will be a yes tonight. I want to thank everyone who worked on this bond because I know it was not easy. I'm truly grateful. I think I said many, many, many times, fix it, and you did. So thank you. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President Sandoval. Yes, thank you to the city staff for all of your work since early, early in the spring. And I think rightly so, inspiring Denver rights to be excited about this bond. I don't think we would have gotten the robust engagement, all of the amazing ideas of folks if we would have just came in and said, we want to do maintenance, and that's all we're gonna do with this bond. We need those economic engines, those drivers that we put into bonds to encourage not only jobs for our residents, which construction and these new projects will also do, but to deliver a construction project, you need to have accountants, lawyers, engineers, all of the other folks in the industry that makes this happen. And that is how cities survive economic downturns. And so it's important, I think, as we talk about this bond, for the Denver residents who are right now maybe watching us or are gonna read about this in the paper, this is a tremendous opportunity for us to do so much for the city and for your neighborhoods in a very, very short period of time. Otherwise, we would never have this opportunity as a city because we do not have the funds in our annual general fund that is funded predominantly by sales tax revenue, what you buy in the city and county of Denver. And we know that that's softening a bit. And so bonds are how we do that as a city and make sure that we keep people employed. And so, you know, my community took that challenge, that opportunity very seriously, and put forward, I think, some amazing bond projects that are a great mix of maintenance, but also new catalytic projects. And so for my community, I want to make sure that I'm being public about this. And, you know, I know a lot of folks have talked about exactly what council district they're representing. But we are a little bit unique in the far northeast where the, the community that I live in, have raised my family in for the last 35 years, is Montbello. And so it is represented by two council people. And I'm very proud to support these three top high priority projects for the Montbello community. And it's the Arie P. Taylor Senior Center. I've gotta say this for Ms. Anne and Mr. Murray, I've gotta put it out there. They were integral in making sure that this was pushed forward. And I was elated to work with Councilwoman Lewis to support her in this. And so A P. Taylor Senior Center, Montbello Civic Center, Park Shade, and then the Montbello Branch Library renovations. Again, those are not in District 11, but what is good in District 11 or District 8? It's good for the entire city. And that is important for us to think about, especially as we move from buying for positions on the bond for our neighborhoods. This is now a citywide project that we need to adjust how we're talking about that. Additionally, specifically in District 11, I was very vocal when we got one of the, I think, second to last or third to last final lists, and the Montbello community, well, excuse me, District 11, had one project on the list. And so I really have to appreciate Patrick Riley, Nicole Dohe, and Mayor Johnston, and Evan Dryer as well for working together to negotiate where we additionally for District 11, got the Green Valley Library Idea Lab, traffic signals for District 11, and additionally, those Montbello Recreation Center improvements. But for the first time in the history of the city and county of Denver, we will for the first time acknowledge on whose land we are on right now and on whose land the US government and the city and county of Denver stole the Cheyenne and Arapaho tribes. And it is historic because next year, there's a lot of hubbub about the 150, 250 commemoration. We need to stop talking about it as we're so excited to wish our state happy birthday when within the same breath, we are also recognizing that systematically government officials in the city and county of Denver allowed the US military to parade horrific scenes down our city street after the Sand Creek massacre. And until our city reconciles with that horrific, horrendous history, it is very hard to create healing and to create those true, authentic partnerships that are going to help everyone move forward in our economy and in our city. And this means for the first time, a place for American Indian people to go who were firstly removed from these lands that we're on right now, moved to reservations in Oklahoma, North and South Dakota, in Nebraska, in Wyoming. We moved them off this land. And then in the 50s and 60s said, hey, come back to Denver. It's great here. We built up the city. We've got lots of opportunities for you. Drew people back to the city and abandoned them. Did not provide those resources. Did literally nothing for them. This community has suffered so much with this country and how it was set up, and they continue to have all of the top numbers when we look at people killed by police, people who go missing, people who don't graduate from high school, people who don't go on to college, people who have children earlier in life, and it makes it more difficult for them to realize their own self-determination. So it looks nice and clean on this document that it's an American Indian Cultural Embassy. It is a culture. It is coming home, but it is also that first time in Denver's history that we will recognize what we did and how we continue to do that, and how we are going to do different going forward and for the first time, give a solid foundational start for people to realize their true potential in life, and finally determine their own self-determination, their own identity, and hopefully build their own generational wealth. And that means entrepreneurship opportunities and a pathway to debt reduction, and hopefully homeownership at some point in time or some housing facility that will help our families in the American Indian community of Denver. And so I wholeheartedly thank the city staff and all of my colleagues for their support in doing the right thing for Denver and very much looking forward to letting folks know about this and the opportunities for us to hopefully pass this bond and get people employed in Denver and move forward in a good way. Thank you, Council President Sandoval.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight I'm voicing my concerns about the Viber and Denver bond. Not because I oppose investing in the future of our city, but because the bond development process is not adequately represented. It's the urgent needs and interests of District 10. The message is particularly directed to the 82.3% of my constituents who reside within District 10, but outside of the downtown Denver authority boundary. For these constituents, this bond represents their only opportunity to secure funding for a project near their homes. I prioritized advocating for the city's top-ranked transportation, excuse me, the top-ranked project in the Viber and Denver Bond Transportation Committee. And it was specifically in creating crucial safety improvements to 13th and 14th avenues, including the section that passes through District 10. This issue is also the sole focus of a unanimously supported letter sent by the Department of Transportation Infrastructure's Advisory Board to City Council last week. Despite overwhelming community support and clear recognition of its importance, we've repeated efforts to include this in the bond even if it's unproductive, adding anything to District 10 to the bond outside of the Tier One Culturals. It is, the administration is willing to consider improvements in District 5 for 13th and 14th avenues, but it continues to oppose needed safety enhancement on, on the District 10 side until after the completion of the Bus Rapid Transit Project on Colfax. It's important to note that the BRT construction in District 10 will be completed in approximately a year from now. The inability to add funding for 13th and 14th avenues is upset constituents like Neil from Congress Park, who just last week emailed me a photo of a car crash next to his home between 13th and 14th avenues. By next to, I mean completely off the street and in the yard just feet from the living room. As another District 10 resident put it, "Our streets should connect us, not threaten our lives." Dottie initially proposed and then withdrew a potential budget amendment to extend protected bike lanes by just 1,000 feet. As the multimodal community urges us to lead by miles, we continue to measure in feet. Let me remind you, I was once a runner and soccer player. Today, due to traffic violence here in Denver, I no longer have the ability to walk. Put it another way, if Vision Zero had been implemented in Denver back in 2008, I would be part of those statistics. To close, I want to go back to my opening. This is for the 82.3% of my constituents who have been sidelined from this capital improvement process. As I share with my constituents, we need, we all need access, and in this case, it includes access to bond funding for District 10. Based upon an outpouring requests, an outpouring of requests, I don't know why I can't read tonight, based upon an outpouring of requests from District 10 residents, they demand the ability to, to explain their concerns, and I want to give them the opportunity to express their opinions at the ballot box. I know how I will vote on this bond, and I want to give the people of District 10, especially the 82.3% of District 10 voters, already I talked about, to give their opportunity to vote too. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to start off my comments tonight, really thanking the communities, thousands and thousands of folks that wrote in and attended town hall meetings, that participated in this process. And I'd say this extremely important process to ensure that we are And I'd say this extremely important process to ensure that we are funding based in our priorities, we're funding, funding for things that will impact our families and our small businesses. Um, I want to thank the administration and many of the folks in the dice who stated that. Uh, I want to specifically call out Nicole Doohan and Patrick Riley. Um, this is not a congressional hearing when y'all come before us, but I know at times it feels that way. Um, and it is because we, as council members, are elevating the voices, the thoughts, the concerns, the questions of the folks that we were elected to serve. Uh, I think both of you have demonstrated, um, um, a deep knowledge of the process, a deep heart and caring, um, for the outcomes. Uh, so I deeply ask the city council members in District Nine, want personally thank both of you, given the time and due diligence you put into this process. I have been engaged in discussions with communities across the fine District Nine for almost two years about potential bond projects. My discussions began even before the administration committed to the twenty twenty-five vibrant bond, and if folks followed my campaign, I listed out several of the projects already on the bond list, uh, while running, um, beginning in twenty twenty-two. It has been and continues to be my belief that this must be a nuts and bolts bond package. I strongly support the proposed nine hundred and fifty million, twenty twenty-five vibrant bond because of its focus on fixing our aging and sometimes dangerous infrastructure and deteriorating facilities throughout the city. If approved by voters, this bond package will deliver on not only District Nine projects, but on projects throughout the city. That'll be a culmination of years of advocacy of many of us here and many of you sitting in the audience. These projects improve pedestrian safety, bicycle access, and public transit, especially on high injury network corridors like Thirty-Eighth Avenue, Thirty-Eighth Street, and Colorado Boulevard. Every District Nine transportation project supports nest neighborhoods, aligning with Denver's equity framework and anti-displacement goals. The bond also supports important District Nine community and educational institutions, ensuring that these vital cultural treasures continue to serve District Nine families and the entire city. The community-informed process for the twenty twenty-five bond was inclusive of input of thousands of Denver residents. Your District Nine office held a town hall meeting and solicited input throughout our newsletter and other communication tools, one-on-one discussions, focus groups, and community, community meetings. I appreciated the strong engagement from neighbors from Gloville, Halyria, Swansia, Whittier, Five Points, Curtis Park, Clayton, Skyland, Cole, and Park Hill. I wanted to list out to folks, um, some of the bond priorities and projects, um, that have been called out, um, across the city and then specifically in District Nine. And to my friends in the audience and my friends who are watching, um, this bike helmet isn't a prop. Um, for prior to becoming a city council member, I rode my bike, uh, pretty much every day to my job at TIAA at Seventeenth and, um, uh, and Broadway, uh, sixteen seventy Broadway. Um, after becoming a city council member, I ride my bike at least three days a week, um, whether it's in winter, spring, summer, fall, and today, most Monday nights. Um, when we left at one-thirty, uh, last Monday, I was one of maybe one, uh, person on their bike leaving this building, um, riding home to my community in Whittier. I commit to you to continue doing the work to ensure that bike infrastructure is across the city. Even prior to the iteration of this bond, um, we celebrated in the Whittier neighborhood, um, connected bike lanes along Twenty-Eighth, um, four-way stops, um, uh, adjacent to Manuel High School, four-way stops adjacent to Combine. And this week, I made a cross in guards across District Nine to discuss increased, um, street safety and street calming. Does not require that either of those, any of those things were elicited in this bond, but you has, has, have a council member, someone who has been fighting to ensure that bike infrastructure is part of our culture and our spending and will continue to do so, um, as I support this bond and the CIP process that will follow. I want to list out some of the critical infrastructure, um, that for many years, some of them ten to fifty years, we've been fighting for in District Nine and have been ignored, uh, by multiple administrations. The Thirty-Eighth Street underpass, which is the flood zone and death zone for anyone coming from Cole to go to Gloville or Swansia. And anyone after four o'clock PM driving through that, um, that, that underpass knows the difficulties. And myself, biking through that, um, is putting my life in the hands of drivers that aren't paying attention because the underpass is broken. Um, the Marion Underpass in Gloville that connects to the Thirty-Eighth Street pass. This has been a CIP priority for almost a decade, along with Thirty-Eighth Street Underpass. Not a new idea. This is something we have been fighting for in community. Completing Thirty-Eighth Street Underpass without doing the Marion Underpass makes absolutely no sense. These are connected projects identified for funding that finally the city is listening to and it's putting into a bond project. And I'll say my, my good friend, Council President, her Thirty-Eighth Avenue project is also part of that connectivity. This is how the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure highlight, elevates projects based on the prioritization, based on connectivity. Many of these have been ignored for decades. Updates to the Blair Caldwell African American History and Research Library.
Yes.
Uh, to my good friend, um, that spoke during the comments, um, we have been fighting to ensure that Black voices and Black community history is embedded in this bond. The African American Research Library has a museum on the third floor. Many people don't know this because the museum cannot be used because the HVAC system doesn't work. Many artifacts that have been kept in families for generations were destroyed because of the lack of HVAC system and the ability to keep those, um, those artifacts in temperature-controlled spaces. This investment, after hundreds of folks in our community came out and fought, uh, for these dollars, that's why this investment is, is in here, because we listen to the African American and the Black community. The buildout of Park Hill Park, and I'm certain that Councilwoman Lewis will speak to this as well, the Black community on the east side, folks say you can just go to City Park, walk across Colorado Boulevard and get there. Why the hell should we?
Right.
Let me be clear, Clayton Farm, where this zoo, not a zoo, where this, I've seen the zoo signs, where this park will be, Black folks could not step foot on that.
Yep.
Unless there was a community event in the clubhouse, I never stepped foot on that since nineteen eighty-seven, when I moved to the city. We as a community fought for open space in that place.
Thirty-eight years ago.
And to say that, no, we shouldn't have this because of any other priorities, is a slap in the face of communities that, once again, not for five years, not for four years, but for forty, fifty years, has been fighting for open space. We got this in this bond, not because people are nice to us, but because we fought for We have dollars in there supporting Denver Zoo, as I see the smiles. We have dollars in there supporting Denver Nature and Science Museum. We also have hardcore dollars for American Indian Cultural Embassy that my counterpart and good friend, council member, um, Fillmore spoke of. Echo Lake Lodge that Kate Friss spoke eloquently about as well, is in this bond. The twenty twenty-five vibrant Denver bond does not include every high injury network project in District Nine. Projects like South Street in Five Points, changing to a two-way conversion, Josephine Street in Swansia and Halyria, changing to a two-way conversion, um, and pedestrian and bike safety along Seventeenth Avenue and Monaco. These will be priorities in our CIP, and I will continue to fight for those priorities. The proposed nine, nine hundred and fifty million dollars is an investment in Denver's future. The vibrant bond, vibrant Denver bond will not raise your taxes. By capping this bond at nine hundred and fifty million, Denver gains new borrowing capacity in twenty twenty-three, allowing voters to decide on future city needs. I'm asking fine District Nine residents and everyone in this audience and everyone who's watching to join me in supporting the twenty twenty-five vibrant bond. It supports our infrastructure, our parks, our libraries, and the cultural institutions that we all rely on. And you can visit the website to see more of the list of projects. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to synthesize some of what I heard from my colleagues. Uh, once again, and as has been true for every bond issue, in the forty-plus years that I've been in this room and watched them pass, Southwest Denver and Council District Two has the least amount of city investment. That's okay. That's okay because the notion of equity doesn't mean that we take nine hundred and fifty million dollars and divide by eleven council districts. The fact is, I don't have a Sixth Avenue or an Eighth Avenue viaduct to repair or replace. I don't have the zoo in my district, except when my grandkids come over to visit. I don't have the museums.
Every ten years, no bond, no bond.
It's a completely different part of town. As I think every council district has its own unique characteristics. So that's something that frankly is okay with me, because we do have a little under eleven million dollars in investment in new bike pump track, whatever a pump track is. I don't know, but Patrick, I think he told me what, what a pump track is. Something I would not do, but, uh, we have, um, we can add to the capital stack for the much-needed parking at the Loretto Theater, so that when that opens, it doesn't get a reputation that you can't go to a show there because you have to park on the other side of Federal Boulevard and walk across Federal, which no one wants to do. There is rehab of some existing tennis courts, uh, two million dollar, uh, upgrades to the HVAC systems at the Bear Valley Library. So a lot of meat and potatoes upgrades and, and very little that's actually new. And that's okay. I understand and I hear what all my other, uh, colleagues have said about how this is a, a process of giving and taking, uh, when you have seven billion dollars, as Councilman Cash mentioned, uh, in capital needs, and we have nine hundred and fifty million dollars on the, um, in, in capacity to divide up. The notion of equity comes in not divide by eleven, but put it where it's needed and where it can leverage the most good for the community all across the board. Uh, you've heard some of the specific projects mentioned, I won't go into them anymore, but they, they run a range from, uh, basic maintenance HVAC repairs to our library to new and innovative projects. The American Indian Embassy was, I believe, the only unanimously supported project in the Arts and Cultural Venues Subcommittee that I chaired. And so I think it's a, basically it's a good package. And I would worry if people, people got up from this process and some folks were happy, enormously happy, and some folks were grumbling, because I think it's true, and someone else started to say it, and I've said this many times, nobody gets everything they want, but everybody gets something they need. And I think this package of authorizations represents that, and I'll be happy to let the voters make their own decisions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Doohan. Thank you, Madam President. Um, there is a lot in this bond, and not everyone, as my colleague just said, will be happy. And it cannot be all the things to all the people in our city. And we know that it's just a reality that we think we're working with a limited amount of money. Um, I have to say, you know, I think similar to some of my colleagues that I've not been completely pleased with the process for this, we got to this place. It was very fast-paced, um, to determine how to spend, you know, now we're upwards of nine hundred and fifty million dollars, which started somewhere in the eight hundred million dollar range initially when we were having conversations. Um, there were these community conversations, which I thought was very admirable. Um, they were held across the city, and they started back in March of this year. And I attended SAEES as one of your at-large members, and I will say that I was excited to see how many community members showed up at the multiple districts and then at the at-large, um, conversation that we had. And they showed up with amazing ideas to be considered, um, to be funded by the bond. Now, everybody was given the parameters and what that meant. Um, I'm sad to report that, um, not all of those ideas made it past the subcommittees or even made it to the subcommittees. And unless your project had resources and you could hire representation, um, to assist with strategy, to make sure that your project met all of the requirements and could access the administration and council members, or like we saw with some communities, were able to actually organize their community to make your voice heard, which I'm grateful that community members did that in the case of La Placita, um, in Montbello, the Santa Fe Streetscape in Santa Fe Art District, and the Kennedy Park Skate Park, just to name a few. Those are some of the few projects that I heard at the several community conversations that I attended, that I heard directly from community members, that were able to make it through that process. There were also, um, some really amazing projects, such as, uh, the proposal on social housing and ensuring that we were allocating much, much more funds towards affordable housing, many who were voiced by several community members at several of these meetings that did not made a conversation phase in that same form. We also know there were admirable projects that would although bring joy to our city, such as in the case with the zoos project to celebrate the Latin American culture, we know that there were other competing priorities that could have a direct impact on community members' health and safety. I asked many times what the process was to assess equity throughout this process, uh, both at the community conversation phase, at the subcommittee phase, and then again, um, here. Was there a type of equity analysis completed when considering projects? And I don't believe that that answer, that was ever truly answered, which leads me to believe that there was not necessarily an actual process when it comes to an equity analysis, perhaps at least at the very minimum, conversations and requests. I appreciate that one of, uh, my colleagues who explained that this process, uh, when we were going through the subcommittee process, uh, that it was not going to be what I was expect, what I was expecting, you know, that we had these community conversations and that all of these brilliant ideas would then come before us in this space where we could talk about whether or not they met the criteria, but knowing that there was an additional step in between. And even though we had so much support through, um, surveys, right, that community members filled out, through them showing up and taking time out of their evenings away from their families to talk to us about what it was that they wanted to see come through this bond package, um, that it just wasn't going to work that way. I am disappointed that we were led to believe that this was a co-led process with community. Um, but I am hopeful for this bond, and I do see many positive projects that are aimed at investing in historically uninvested communities. I agree that we are in a moment of time when we have to be very intentional about our needs as a city, for the people in our city, and the nice to haps. I believe this body has talked about that when we've talked about the budget, um, and I really hope that we continue to think about that as we do venture into that next venture of the budget. And I will be supporting this bond package this evening, and I'm hopeful that we can continue to support this if it is referred to the ballot. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramirez. Thank you, Council President. This definitely hasn't been easy, um, and I really appreciate all my colleagues' comments and appreciate all the work from city staff that I took to get to this point. Um, growing up in the area that I am, I've seen things go unresolved my entire life, uh, as far as projects that we need, and that's very challenging. Um, and I understand that, uh, we don't get everything we want, but this is our values. This bond is our values. Um, it's a representation of our values, not that this actual proposal is our values. And, um, bond initiatives must come to the city council for a reason before they go to the ballot. It's not that we're preventing voter access, it's that we're ensuring equity, that we feel like there was public accountability, that we feel like there was public oversight. Um, and this is not your normal bond. There has never been a bond for just six years for almost a billion dollars. This is the first time, this is the first time we've had this level of contingency. This is the first time we've had all of these other costs rolled in. Um, so I am going to be voting on some portions of this bond, specifically facilities and transportation. This is not a decision I make lightly. This is not a decision I make lightly, but one grounded in deep concern for equity, transparency, fiscal responsibility, and the voices of my constituents. It feels like a bait and switch, or we're getting a little, or getting bread crumbed. So you should be happy and we should ignore all the other priorities. This process was again and again said rushed. I was very supportive in the very beginning of this as I dug into research on what is a bond, how it's funded, and all of those things. And I do feel like it does shortchange our BIPOC communities, our Elections Division, our cultural facilities. And even though I'm thrilled about some of the projects like the American Indian Embassy, it's a drop in the bucket when it comes to this grand bond that I am concerned. Are we going to be able to do a billion dollars worth of projects in six years? And what I'm hearing is I should just be happy with what we got and I just don't get that. I don't think everyone gets something they need. I don't think our Elections Division is getting everything it needs to secure our elections, and that is concerning. I fear we're skipping on critical conversations about long-term fiscal health and placing burden, the burden of Denver's growth on taxpayers instead of developers who benefit most. From the beginning, council was told that this bond would be capped at eight hundred million. That figure shaped what projects were submitted in District Seven. That meant leaving out longstanding high-needs priorities like the Alameda Underpass, which is over a hundred years old and has been in the books for generations. Now we're looking at a billion-dollar bond without clarity on why that number changed over a hundred million and an unprecedented slash fund of contingency and admin costs, which cost us another hundred million, just in interest. Though this, through this, throughout this process, we've received inconsistent guidance. Subcommittees were told not to consider the value of projects and certain projects were prioritized. I would feel foolish if after this vote, we get a lot more information that shows that I shouldn't have supported all of these projects. At the same time, the Elections Division being removed, the zoo being left out, and neighborhoods like Park Hill are shortchanging because seventy million is not going to do what Park Hill needs. These cuts are not just symbolic, they're systemic. And we also have the housing fund that is a little blurry and I don't know exactly what that's going to do, but clearly it's a need, so I'm going to support that part of the bond. The number one concern I hear from my constituents is the lack of investment in pedestrian safety, bike infrastructure, and public transit access. These aren't extras, they're life-saving, climate-friendly essentials, especially in working-class and immigrant neighborhoods that rely heavily on non-car transportation. This bond doesn't meet this moment when our elections are at risk. We're also being asked to reassure voters that this bond isn't going to increase your property taxes, even though the state legislature still hasn't passed a permanent fix for stabilizing assessments. Without that fix, we can't in good faith guarantee tax stability for homeowners and small businesses, which are closing every day. There was one on South, another one on South Broadway in the news today, especially in communities like Athraville Park, Ruby Hill, that are already experiencing displacement. Yes, we need revenue, absolutely. And affordability is also the number one complaint that I hear from my residents. And I ask, why are we executing layoffs now before council has a fully transparent conversation about the two hundred million dollar shortfall in 2026? Are these layoffs and recent civil service rule changes a strategy to reduce operating costs and maintain our credit rating ahead of bond sales, which are not all AAA rated? Why did the city's annual comprehensive fiscal report show actual revenue at 1.83 billion, higher than the budgeted 1.76, yet we're being told there's shortfalls and we don't have those numbers still? And again, I think I've talked enough about the bridges and the importance that my residents feel they have to have access to better pedestrian safety and bike safety. And this moment raises broader questions. Are we permanently relying on bonds in the future to do our basic maintenance? How are we going to have a revenue stream that actually meets our needs? What's the actual total of annual debt obligations? And how will we absorb the operating and maintenance costs of new bond assets at a time of stagnant and declining revenue? And if this bond passes, how long is it going to be before we ask for another bond? Even the city's own documents on credit ratings stopped at 2024, so I didn't see projections into the future of how we're going to qualify for these bonds or how our rating is projected to be over the next few years. In District Seven, I have received over a hundred unsolicited emails opposing the bond. Not one single one from a resident in support. People see through flashy promises and recognize the deeper pattern of infrastructure in working-class communities continuing to be ignored while high-profile projects in gentrifying areas get greenlit. There's also a lack of trust from the mayor's office and the Department of Finance. I feel like we're going to get new information in the future and it will affect what decision that I make today. Text messages that I received on July fourteenth said, "We have to meet with you this week because the Broncos are going to make an announcement," and all of a sudden, I couldn't make that work that week, and so then there was no announcement. And so those are the kinds of things that I struggle with when we're trying to be transparent and open with our residents. And community voices are being ignored and major decisions are being rushed. I believe in investment. I believe in public infrastructure. I want a lot of these projects to happen. But it needs to be equitable, transparent, and community-driven. We need to do this with community. And it's clear to me the community feels left out by the inbox that I have and the calls that I've been getting. We deserve better than this vague housing promise. We deserve a process that uplifts our most underserved neighborhoods, protects elections, strengthens safety, strengthens our cultural facilities and access for all, and tells the truth about our city's financial structure and where we're going in the future. So that's why I will be a no on the facilities and the transit part of the bond tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, so, thank you, Councilmember Albiere. To put a pin in everything, tonight we're referring the Vibrant Denver Bond Package to the November ballot, giving you, the voters, the opportunity to decide on the set of infrastructure and community investments that will shape our city for years to come. When I was doing an analysis, not actually me, my staff, and I looked at Council District One, I've always wondered how portions of Denver, and I'll just name the Platte River West, get left out of the bond. Councilmember Flynn mentioned it, Councilwoman Albiere has mentioned it, and Councilwoman Torres mentioned it. In the Do Better Denver Bond, in 2007, Council District One had 2.89% of that bond, five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. In the Elevate Bond, in 2017, Council District One had 3.49%, nine hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. In the Ride Bond, we got 6.95%, so almost seven percent. So we were gaining traction. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of infrastructure. And two hundred, two hundred million, two hundred and sixty million. So we really gained. And in the Vibrant Denver Bond Package right now, it's the biggest of its kind. We would have eighty-six million, three hundred thousand in that bond. And one of them, the biggest project in Northwestern Denver, is what I've heard, a grown-up, I grew up driving around Thirty-Eighth Avenue, I grew up on Thirty-seventh in Bulejo, is fifty-six million dollars in infrastructure for Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Five million dollars for Slums Lake for the health. There was just an article that says this Dragon Milk Festival might have to move out of the Slums Lake neighborhood because of the health. A pool replacement for Ocelon Pool across the street from a Denver Housing Authority. Where on average you complete, say, fifty to sixty kids playing in that pool every day. Ten million dollars for the Denver Children's Advocacy Center. For those who may not know, we have an advocacy center in Northwest Denver. So if a child is part of a crime, any type of crime, we have a trauma-informed center for them to get treatment, for their parents to get treatment, for them to be able to participate in the investigation. And a million dollars for Herschel Park. As many of my colleagues mentioned, this is not a perfect bond, but it is what we have with nine hundred and fifty million, the biggest, I think, in Denver's history. And this bond includes a lot of rec centers, libraries, as I mentioned, streets and mobility, and our beloved cultural institutions, which is though they didn't get as much as they asked. I sat through a whole entire committee on the executive bond as the executive, one of the executive bond members. A whole entire presentation on our culturals. Much-needed money to the art museums, to the Latin American Zoo Experience, to our Denver Museum of Nature and Science. And just think, I just want you all to think, those are economic generation. They do economic revenue for our Denver. And they still did not get what they needed. And I appreciate the steadfast leadership from all of our culturals here. And one of them came to me and said, "Now we're partners with the whole entire bond package." Even though we did not get our project in here, we are going to support this package because it's much needed for Denver, even though our project did not get in the package. That's leadership. That's coming together as a community of doing what's best for the greater good, even though when you don't get exactly what you need. And that's not easy to do, because I know a lot of people did not always get what they wanted. But they're looking at the greater good of Denver, and that's the type of leadership that I gravitate towards, and that's the type of bond that I believe this is. I want to just express my deep gratitude to the residents who showed up to the public meetings, submitted comments, stayed engaged throughout this process. Your input helps shape what's before us this evening. To my colleagues, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for always answering my emails and saying, "Hey, do you have any other priorities? Hey, fill out this Excel doc so I can represent you on the Executive Bond Committee." Answering my text messages, "I need more information on this. Can you have people show up?" Thank you for your patience with me. To the people who served on the subcommittees, thank you for your dedication to Denver. Thank you for your recommendations. To the Executive Bond Committee and our dedicated city staff, we couldn't have done it without you. Thank you for your time and effort and thoughtful recommendations. That's what public service is.
No reparations included.
Staying up late when no one else is out, not getting a paycheck when you can get a bigger paycheck in the private sector and sticking with us in the public sector. I really appreciate that. I see you. And I just want to acknowledge once again that there were some meaningful projects that did not make it into this bond package. And with that, that does not mean the door is closed. Some may be better suited for funding through other types of funding mechanisms. Slums Lake did not get all the money they need, and I know I have a commitment from the administration to look at other funding mechanisms. And I fully understand the importance of those proposals. And I want you to know my door is open and the conversation is not done just because we are referring this to the ballot. In closing, I'll just say that this bond is a reflection of our shared values. Investing in places that bring us together, inspire, learn, enjoy, and ultimately improve the daily life. And now, with this vote, we will hand it off to the voters of Denver to decide. With that, Madam President, Madam Secretary, we'll call on Council Bill 1060 as amended.
Councilmembers Albiere?
No.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Gonzales Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Louis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Speaker, close the voting and announce the results? Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. Council Bill 25-1060 as amended has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on your screens. Council Bill 1053, a bill for an ordinance submitting a vote to the of the qualified and registered electors of the city and county of Denver at a special municipal election to be held Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. The question of whether the city shall be authorized to issue general obligation bonds, notes, and other obligations for the purpose of financing or refinancing repairs and investments to the city's transportation and mobility infrastructure and facilities. Providing the form of the ballot question, providing for other details and connection there within, and ratifying action previously taken. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill 1053 on the floor for final move passage?
I move that Council Bill 25-1053 be placed upon final consideration and be passed.
It's been moved in second. Yeah, it's been moved in second. Commissioner Lewis, your motion to amend?
I move that Council Bill 25-1053 be amended in the following particulars. On page three, line nine, strike four hundred and forty-six million, four hundred and twenty thousand, with a maximum repayment cost eight million, eight million ninety-seven, and replaced with four hundred and forty-one million, four hundred and twenty thousand, with a maximum repayment cost of nine hundred and six million. Two, on page four, line twenty-four, strike four hundred and forty-six million, four hundred and twenty thousand, and replaced with four hundred and forty-one million, two hundred, four hundred and twenty thousand, excuse me.
It has been moved in second. Comments, findings on the amendment to Council Bill 1053? Would any of the sponsors like to speak to this amendment?
Just that this operationalizes the amendment that we made before general public comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Parity. Madam Secretary, we'll call on the amendment to Council Bill 1053. Councilmembers Albiere?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzales Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam President, for some reason, my, I said aye and pushed aye. My screen went to nay.
Yeah, it's not on my screen. I didn't see it either. That may have been me. I heard nay. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, I said aye. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results? Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. The amendment to Council Bill 1053 has passed. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill 1053 on the floor for final passage as amended?
Yes, Council President. I move that Council Bill 25-1053 be placed upon final consideration and be passed as amended.
Madam Secretary, we'll call on Council Bill 1053 as amended. Councilmembers Albiere?
May?
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore? Gonzales Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
No.
Cashman?
Louis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval? And Madam Speaker, close the voting and announce the results? Eleven ayes. Eleven ayes. Council Bill 1053 as amended has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill 1054, a bill for an ordinance submitting to a vote of the qualified and registered electors of the city and county of Denver at a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. The question of whether the city shall be authorized to issue general obligation bonds, notes, and other obligations for the purpose of financing and/or refinancing repairs and improvements to city parks and recreation infrastructure and facilities. Providing the form of the ballot question, providing for other details and connection there within, and ratifying action previously taken. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill 1054 on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill 1054 be placed upon final consideration and be passed.
It's been moved in second. Councilmember Parity?
I apologize. I had a comment that is specific to this item, knowing the comments on the package as a whole. I just want to say that I will be a no only on this ballot item. And the reason for that is not because I don't deeply appreciate our Parks and Recs infrastructure, but just because, as I said, on the Parks Subcommittee, in my mind, given our funding crisis at this moment, I think other infrastructure needs in the city that impact people's safety, particularly around transit, housing and those kind of things are just a lot more urgent. So within the range of Parks and Recs, I would have liked to be seeing climate-related infrastructure, irrigation projects that would save us money on water and those kinds of things. And it breaks my heart to vote against some of the really beautiful amenities that are in this bill, but I don't think it's where our priorities are at right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing you know the speakers in the queue, Madam Secretary, we'll call on Council Bill 1054. Council members, Albitres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
No.
Cashman? Aye. Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
No.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results? Eleven ayes. Eleven ayes. Council Resolution 1054 has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill 1055, a bill for an ordinance submitting to a vote of the qualified and registered electors, electors of the City and County of Denver at a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. The question of whether the city shall be authorized to issue general obligation bonds, notes, and other obligations for the purpose of financing and/or refinancing repairs and improvements to health and human services, infrastructure, and facilities, providing the form of the ballot question, providing for other details and connection there within, and ratifying action previously taken. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill 1055 on the floor for final passage?
Yes, I move that Council Bill 1055 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
It has been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, we'll call on Council Bill 1055. Council members, Albitres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results? Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. Council Bill 1055 has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill 1056, a bill for an ordinance submitting to a vote of the qualified and registered electors of the City and County of Denver at a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. The question of whether the city shall be authorized to issue general obligation bonds, notes, or other obligations for the purpose of financing and/or refinancing repairs and improvements to city infrastructure and facilities, providing the form of the ballot question, providing for other details and connection there within, and ratifying action previously taken. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill 1056 on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill 1056 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
It has been, Councilmember Sawyer, you were the seconded for that one. Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Councilmember Lewis, your motion to amend?
I move that Council Bill 25-1056 be amended in the following particulars. On page three, line five, strike two hundred and fifty-two million, four hundred and thirty thousand, with a maximum repayment cost of five hundred and two million, and replaced with two hundred and forty-four million, four hundred and thirty thousand, with a max, maximum replacement cost of four to, four hundred and eighty-five million. On page four, line seventeen, strike two hundred and fifty-two million, four hundred and thirty thousand, and replaced with two hundred and forty-four million, four hundred and thirty thousand.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council on the amendment to 1056? Would any of the sponsors like to speak to this amendment?
Uh, yes, this again accomplishes the minimum funds, um, to complete what we did by amending 1060 to add money back to overall housing.
Thank you, Councilmember Parity. Madam Secretary, we'll call on the amendment to Council Bill 1056. Council members, Albitres?
No.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results? Twelve ayes. Twelve ayes. The amendment to Council Bill 1056 has passed. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill 1056 on the floor for final passage as amended?
Yes, Council President, I move that Council Bill 1056 be placed upon final consideration and do pass as amended.
Seeing you know the comments in the queue, Madam Secretary, we'll call on Council Bill 1056 as amended. Council members, Albitres?
Nay.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results? Twelve ayes. Twelve ayes. Council Bill 1056 as amended has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill 1057, a bill for an ordinance submitting to a vote of the qualified and registered electors of the City and County of Denver at a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. The question of whether the city shall be authorized to issue general obligation bonds, notes, and other obligations for the purpose of financing and/or refinancing repairs and improvements to housing and shelter, infrastructure, and facilities, providing the form of the ballot question, providing for other details and connection there within, and ratifying action previously taken. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill 1057 on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill 1057 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Lewis, your motion to amend?
I move that Council Bill 25-1057 be amended in the following particulars. On page three, line six through seven, strike forty-six million, three hundred thousand, with a maximum repayment cost of eighty-four million, and replaced with fifty-nine million, three hundred thousand, with a maximum replacement cost of ninety-four million. On page three, line ten through eleven, strike affordable housing and repl- placed with affordability. On page four, line ten, strike forty-six million, three hundred thousand, replaced with fifty-nine million, three hundred thousand.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council on the amendment? Any of the sponsors?
No.
Madam Secretary, we'll call on the amendment to Council Bill 1057. Council members, Albitres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results? Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. The amendment to Council Bill 1057 has passed. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill 1057 on the floor for final passage as amended?
I move that Council Bill 1057 be placed upon final consideration and do pass as amended.
Madam Secretary, we'll call on Council Bill 1057 as amended. Council members, Albitres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results? Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. Council Bill 1057 as amended has passed. This concludes the items to be called out. Congratulations, colleagues. Thank you for sticking with us. All bills for introduction are ordered published. Council members, remember that this is a consent or block vote and you will need to vote aye, otherwise this is your last chance to call out an item for a separate vote. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put the resolutions for adoption and the bills on final consideration for final passage on the floor?
Yes, I move that the resolutions be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. Uh, 1033, 1038, 1020, 0978, 0999, 0876, 1019, 1034, 1035, 1036, 1037, 1040, 1041, 1042, 1045, 1046, 1047, and 1010, all series of 25.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, we'll call. Council members, Albitres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results? Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. The resolutions have been adopted and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. Thank you all for sticking with us. Congratulations. That has been, everything has been wrapped up for tonight. Now we're headed into the public hearing. We have four public hearings tonight. As a reminder, council members need to turn on their video during the vote. For those participating in virtual person, when called upon, please come to the podium. On the presentation monitor on the wall, you will see your time counting down. For those participating virtually when called upon, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker. When you are promoted, please accept the promotion, turn on your camera if you have one, and your microphone. All speakers should begin their remarks by telling council their names and cities and residents, and if they feel comfortable doing so, their home addresses. If you have signed up to answer questions only, state your name and note that you are available for questions in council. Speakers will have three minutes. There is no yielding of time. If translation is needed, you will be given an additional three minutes for your comments to be interpreted. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and must direct their comments to council as a whole. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech and refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilmember Gil- hold on. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill 0902, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for 2420 West 14th Avenue in Lincoln Park, on the floor for final passage?
Yes, Council President, I move that Council Bill 25-0902 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 0902 is open. Will you please have the staff report from Community Planning Development? Okay, thank you, Edson. Okay. Thank you. Do you see the presentation?
Great, yep.
Yeah? Do you need any help?
No, I think it's good. Is it coming up?
Good night, producer. Do we have the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Sorry, I don't know who I'm talking to.
Okay, you're talking to me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right here, right ahead of you, right there.
Council President, thank you so much.
No problem. I'm not just the voice in the clouds. Sometimes I feel like it, though. All right, go ahead. The floor is yours. If you just introduce yourself, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Council President. Hello, good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Fritz Clausen, Associate City Planner with Community Planning. Here to present on rezoning case at 2420 West 14th Avenue. We'll go through the request, the location and context, the process, the review criteria, and the recommendation. Let's begin with the request. The request for this property is to change the zoning from the current CMX5, that's urban center, uh, mixed use five, to CMX8. The property is a point seventy-three acre surface parking lot. The reasoning behind the request is to align zoning across the site. There is a portion of the overall steam on flat development that is currently zoned as CMX8. This is from the portion that's highlighted in red on the map to CMX5, uh, to resolve the split zoning on the property. Next, the location and context. We are in Council District Three, represented by Councilmember Jamie Torres, and in the La Alma Lincoln Park statistical neighborhood. The current zoning is CMX5, approximate to other CMX5 areas, CMX8, IMX5, IB, and OSC along the Platte River Corridor. The site is subject to two view plane restrictions. Uh, it's subject to the Old City Hall view plane and the State Capitol view plane. Uh, to summarize that, the maximum allowable building height on the site is a hundred and fifteen feet. Uh, just as a note, C-MX-eight has a maximum height of a hundred-and-ten feet or a hundred-and-fifty feet with incentives. The current land use is parking, adjacent to other parking, commercial retail, office, and industrial uses. The top photo, uh, shows a view of the property. Looking from the north to the south, we can see the XL ZNI generating plan in the background of the picture. Bottom shot is looking in the reverse direction towards the northwest at the Steamon Flat Development and Rice's Estate Company. Site is in the under your floodplain. Uh, just as a note, C-MX-five allows the townhouse, general, and shopfront, uh, building forms. C-MX-eight allows the same forms as well. There is a housing agreement that has been reached between the owners of the property and host. The housing agreement requires twelve percent of total dwelling units to be income restricted at sixty percent or less of AMI, area median income, with a ninety-nine year covenant. Uh, this agreement covers the entire Steamon and Platt property, not just the portion that we're looking at for rezoning today. It replaces, it replaced an existing similar agreement. Next, the process. Uh, this application had its informational notice go out on March twenty-fifth of this year, followed by planning board notice on May nineteenth. Planning Board Public Hearing was held on June fourth. And a meeting of the City Council South Platte River Committee is held on June twenty-fifth. And we are here tonight, City Council Public Hearing, August fourth, twenty-twenty-five. As far as public comments go, um, we've received two letters in support from registered neighborhood organizations, the La Alma Lincoln Park Neighborhood Association and the Sun Valley Community Coalition. We've not received any comments from members of the public to date. Next, the review criteria. There are three review criteria for a map amendment in the Denver zoning code. Consistency with adopted plans, public interest, and consistency with neighborhood contact. Neighborhood contact, zone district purpose, and intent. There are those in their, uh, technical forms. We'll begin with consistency with adopted plans. There are, there's a whole bucket of plans that apply to this property. Comprehensive Plan Twenty-Forty, Blueprint Denver, the Decatur Federal Station Area Plan, and the La Alma Lincoln Park Neighborhood Plan. First, Comprehensive Plan Twenty-Forty. Uh, this application is consistent with many comprehensive plan goals and strategies, including promoting high-quality infill development where infrastructure and services are already in place and fit into the surrounding neighborhoods and offer opportunities for increased amenities, as well as encouraging mixed-use communities where residents can live, work, and recreate in their own neighborhood. Moving on to Blueprint Denver, our land use and transportation plan and guide to implementing Comprehensive Plan Twenty-Forty. Blueprint Denver recommendations are based on contexts, and this property is characterized as a district. Districts are places with a specifically designated purpose, such as educational campuses or, in this case, industrial areas. Uh, more specifically, Blueprint classifies this area as a type of manufacturing district called innovation flex. These areas typically include assembly facilities, labs, mall logistics and warehousing, local food catering, tech firms, value manufacturing, and related offices, but are compatible with residential uses and commonly include multi-tenant and mixed-use buildings. Under Blueprint's growth strategy, districts are intended to host fifteen percent of new jobs and ten percent of new housing growth that we'll see by twenty-forty. Uh, more on manufacturing districts in Blueprint Denver. The Sun Valley area, the law, yeah, Sun Valley area and La Alma Lincoln Park, um, has both innovation flex and value manufacturing areas. We know that manufacturing districts in Denver face considerable growth pressure, including pressure to change uses and preserving industrial areas, uh, for use is a key city interest. The Blueprint process included an industrial land study to evaluate what areas to prioritize preserving as industrial. This particular area was identified as low-value, high-threat, which Blueprint identifies as a convert area, a place that we should allow to convert to other uses. Real quick, what's equity? Uh, Blueprint defines it as equity is when everyone, regardless of who they are or where they come from, has the opportunity to thrive. As a city, we advance equity by serving individuals, families, and communities in a manner that reduces or eliminates persistent institutional biases and barriers based on race, ability, gender identity, and sexual orientation, age, and other factors. Uh, Blueprint Denver contains three equity concepts to help guide change to benefit everyone. Each equity concept has associated measurements that help inform implementation actions through large rezonings, uh, with other implementation, through large rezonings and other actions. Uh, this graphic shows the associated measurements that make up the scores of each equity concept. Um, for this property and the La Alma Lincoln Park neighborhood as a whole, the equity analysis tells us that this area has a relatively high access to opportunity, uh, three-point-nine out of five, high vulnerability to displacement, three out of three, and lower-than-average housing and jobs diversity, two out of five. Looking at access to opportunity, we have a high-average score, uh, but some issues in terms of higher-than-average childhood obesity and lower-than-average access to healthcare compared to the city as a whole. On vulnerability to involuntary displacement, there are a few key factors contributing to less access to opportunity compared to Denver as a whole, including higher than, oh, I'm sorry, contributing to more vulnerability to displacement compared to Denver as a whole. I misspoke. Including lower-than-average median household income and educational attainment and a higher-than-average percentage of rent or occupied housing. Now, in order to help us better understand vulnerability to displacement, we analyze supplemental demographic information as well, which in this case included, um, racial composition. We see that La Alma Lincoln Park as a whole has a lower-than-average proportion, uh, sorry, higher-than-average, uh, I'm getting this backwards here. A lower-than-average.
It's okay, just take your time.
Yeah, sorry.
You got it, no problem.
It's, it's the non thing that trips me up. It has a lower-than-average proportion of residents identifying as non-Hispanic white and a higher rate of change over the last few years compared to the city as a whole. This suggests La Alma Lincoln Park may be experiencing gentrification and displacement.
Yes, duh.
Uh, the neighborhood has lower median household incomes than Denver as a whole, but has also seen a much higher increase in the statistic than, um, rest, the rest of the city in the recent past. The neighborhood has a similar percentage of residents over the age of sixty-five as the city as a whole, uh, but we've seen that number increase here as well. Moving on to housing diversity, this is a less diverse area in terms of housing, which factors in lower-than-average bedroom counts in homes, lower-than-average diversity in housing costs, and a mix of rented and owned homes. For job diversity, there is a higher-than-average proportion of manufacturing jobs and lower-than-average retail and innovation jobs compared to the rest of the city. Uh, next, we'll look at some of the other plans that apply. Uh, this property is identified as a transit-oriented development area in the Decatur Federal Station Area Plan. This plan includes recommendations to create a livable TOD community. That's TOD for Transit-Oriented Development, through encouraging a mix of land uses, including multifamily residential, especially mixed-income communities that meet the needs of families, young professionals, students, and elderly households. In addition, the Station Area Plan recommends a twelve-story maximum building height in this area and includes goals around orienting development toward the South Platte River and activating greenways by locating multifamily residential uses along them. This property is identified as part of a transit-oriented development area and as a proposed mixed-income housing development in the Decatur Federal Station Area Plan. And finally, the plan also recommends creation of a mixed-income neighborhood, uh, which this application supports by targeting new multifamily along the riverfront and including affordable housing through its Affordable Housing Plan. Next is the La Alma Lincoln Park Neighborhood Plan. This area is identified in the La Alma Lincoln Park Neighborhood Plan as a mixed-use character area, character area. The goal to transition from industrial to mixed-use and provide mixed-income housing. Other goals in the La Alma Lincoln Park Neighborhood Plan include, uh, fostering additional business opportunities for local businesses and entrepreneurs and, uh, providing a mixed-income redevelopment. The plan does not have specific land use recommendations for this parcel, so we look to general goals like the ones we've seen before. And it does not have a specific height recommendation for this property either. That's it for adopted plans. Next, public interest. Uh, we see this, uh, application as serving the public interest by not only furthering the goals and guidance of our adopted plans, but also by creating a new affordable housing and helping to activate and enhance our South Platte River Corridor. Finally, uh, last criteria, consistency with neighborhood context, zone, district purpose, and intent. The requested C-MX-eight zone district is within the urban center neighborhood context, which generally consists of multi-residential and mixed-use commercial centers and corridors. The general purpose for the mixed-use zone districts stated in the Denver zoning code is to promote safe, active, pedestrian-scale diverse areas and to focus on creating mixed, diverse neighborhoods. The specific intent of the C-MX-eight zone district is to have it applied to areas or intersections served primarily by arterial streets where building scale to eight stories is desired. Overall, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the urban center neighborhood contacts that exist in the surrounding area and with the C-MX-eight district purpose and intent. Next, the staff's recommendation. Finally, based on meeting the criteria for review in the Denver zoning code, staff recommends approval for this application. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have two individuals signed up to speak this evening. If you are here in person, after your new call, send me your way up to the. Recording in progress.
Yes, good evening, members of council, those watching at home, those in the council chambers. My name is Jesse Lashawn Parrish, and I'm representing for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Committee for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the Northeast Denver Residents Council, Frontline Black News, the Revolutionary Agenda, Shabaka's Black Experience Enhanced, and I reside at Legacy Lofts in the fine District Nine and Councilman Darryl Watson's district. Um, on the surface, this really sounds like a really good idea. Yeah, just put a mixed-income house next to a highway. Um, yeah, that's really, really good, good thinking on y'all part, right? Um, I have several questions. Has there been a rail study done? Has there been a traffic study done? Has there been a good neighborhood group? Something about affordability? Twelve percent of the units are supposed to be aff- below sixty percent AMI. It's not really affordable, okay? Um, has there been an air quality study done? Because like I said, this is right next to a highway, I-25. Um, R T D don't really service this area. I think there's one bus route in nine, maybe, that would service this area. Um, the train station is not, it's relatively close, but it's not close enough where they can just walk to it, I guess. But I guess that's what y'all were trying to say, it's real close to transit and, uh, all of that, even though in reality it's really not. Um, and it's just like a super fun site. It used to be a parking lot, is what you're saying. So you want to turn a parking lot into mixed-use housing. And who is going to occupy this? Because it seemed like it's going to be another Sun Valley. You're just going to put the poorest residents in one of the worst traffic and pollution-prone areas of the city. So if somebody could please answer my question, since I like to answer or rebuttal what I say, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you, and I'll see you on the next one.
Thank you. Next up, Jeanne Bando.
Goodie. Jordan.
Recording in progress.
I'm speaking on its behalf in support of the proposed rezoning for twenty-four-twenty West Fourteenth Avenue. We voted a neighborhood position on April first, twenty-twenty-five. Thirty-nine voted to support the application, zero voted to oppose the application. We also had an additional eight youth under the ages of eighteen years who voted unanimously in support. And while their votes do not determine final outcome, their opinions do inform the adult vote and are recorded. Over the years, the coalition has been very supportive of the steam on the Platt campus development. Sun Valley's topography is very much a valley along the South Platte River, with the river serving as its eastern boundary. While Sun Valley is not technically the neighborhood of location for this parcel, the steam on the Platt campus's location along the eastern riverbank and along co, lower Colfax makes it psychologically very much a part of the Sun Valley neighborhood. The SBCC applauds Urban Ventures, who has been the catalyst for revitalizing this previously neglected industrial section of the neighborhood while respecting its character and history. The coalition previously supported rezoning to C-MX-eight for an adjacent parcel, and similar rezoning for this parcel will allow for the planned development of both par, parcels to move forward. We look forward to the implementation of the concept plan that includes affordable housing in excess of city requirements, commercial development that will create jobs, and activation that will aesthetically enhance the eastern riverbank. We urge you to vote yes on the proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. That con, that concludes our speakers. We have questions from members of council on Council Bill Zero-Nine-Zero-Two. Councilman Torres.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Fritz, let me ask you a question really quickly. The, one of your later slides, um, referencing the La Alma Lincoln Park Neighborhood Plan, I think it's, um, slide forty-five or forty-six. Um, let's go to forty-five. Uh, what guidance does this give you in terms of the context for this area? Because it's not got any color to it, so just wondering what you go off of there.
Right, in, in, in that case, uh, for the La Alma Lincoln Park Neighborhood Plan specifically, we looked at the general plan goals, uh, that were on a previous slide. Uh, the first one, that it's a mixed-use character area, that we have the stated goal of transition from industrial to mixed-use and to provide mixed-income housing. And we also look to the other, uh, plan guidance and, and goals and strategies for, for guidance as well.
Okay. Um, thank you. And then I'll also just direct my colleagues to the next slide, um, which doesn't give any high guidance for most of, uh, the industrial corridor, except for like the Thirteenth Avenue, um, uh, stretch. Um, this is why we, we advocated for the inclusion of a small-area plan, uh, this year for this entire area. So I want to be just really clear that, um, we don't just have a conversation about a single property, like Burnham Yard. We have to have it for the whole industrial corridor, which doesn't have a lot of guidance. Um, and it includes this, um, this area, so I appreciate you including these, um, these maps. Um, just have a couple of questions for the applicant, Sue. Thank you, Fritz.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Powers. Um, for purposes of this, I am manager of fourteen-oh-one ZNI Investments, which is the owner of the property.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, and thank you, Jean, um, for representing the position of Sun Valley. Uh, did we have a position from the La Alma Lincoln Park, or no?
They were in support as well.
They were in support as well. Thank you for that. Um, can you tell me a little bit about, um, what's planned for this property?
Sure. Um, and as you know, the word is planned, so it's, we're, we're in the middle of a concept signal process right now. But what is currently planned is a hotel on the property that's next to the Rice's Brewery, on that parking lot, the parking that would be available for Rice's on the first level, as they have now. And then an apartment building on the larger parcel, um, up to this point, about two-hundred-and-forty units, with twelve percent of them being affordable.
Great. Um, what kind of affordability arrangement was agreed to?
Um, twelve percent of the units would be at sixty percent of the AMI or below, or below.
Okay, super helpful. Um, can you tell me a little bit? I know it's still in planning, but, um, you've got some, uh, streetways almost that are included here. Kind of what's the infrastructure plan for, um, getting in and out?
You know, the existing, um, curb cut along Colfax would remain, and that would be a primary entrance. Um, about two years ago, we vacated Fourteenth Avenue because it really went nowhere. Um, but that would remain as a, uh, as a, as a street entrance, and there would be an access easement placed on that. So there would be two entrances to the site. Obviously, it sits on the river, so that's, that's the primary front door. And I think that's something, it was a reason that we, when we bought the property, we, we looked at it and said, how often can you find property that sits on the river? And, uh, and we had every expectation and intention of, um, of orienting this to the river so that it, it takes advantage of that and makes it also available to the public.
That's great. That was going to be my next question, because there's a lot of guidance around, um, how new development incorporates itself into the, um, South Platte kind of river corridor study and, um, and what that does. So what does that look like when you say you're oriented to the river?
Well, the residential building, well, for one, the, the Rice's Brewery, if you haven't been there, we'd invite you all to, to go.
Thanks, Mike, for Rice's.
Thank you. Um, it has a wonderful outdoor patio that sits right on the river. So if you go south of that, then this building, uh, would face on it. There would be townhome design of the building on that first floor that would face out to it. And there would be a private walkway there, but then on the other side, along the city right away, um, there would be a, um, a bike lane. Right now, it's a, I think I see the parks department here. It doesn't go anywhere because it doesn't go under, under the, uh, light rail line there. But maybe in the future it might, but there will be a bike lane, pedestrian walkway that gives access down to the river.
Okay. Okay, that's great. Um, I don't think I have any other questions. I guess one would be, you're going for, um, uh, C-MX-eight. You probably could have gone higher, but you're choosing to stay at eight, right?
Um, well, we're going to take advantage, we hope to take advantage of the affordable, the affordable, um, incentive and would go to ten stories.
Okay, and so that still keeps you underneath the, the baseline. Great, thank you so much, Sue. Thank you, Madam President. No more questions?
Thank you. See, there are speakers in the queue. No other questions from council members? The public hearing. The public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill Zero-Nine-Zero-Two? Councilman Torres.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'm really pleased to support, um, today. I think, uh, um, the team has done an incredible amount of work, uh, to talk to nearby neighbors. Um, even though, um, this is in La Alma Lincoln Park, it is right across the river and within the view of, um, Sun Valley. So thank you for working with, with both communities. Um, uh, to be able to thoughtfully develop parking lots, um, especially those along our river, um, is one of the reasons we created this, the South Platte Corridor Committee to really kind of take a look at, um, what's happening to properties along that corridor and how is it really embracing the river as an asset and helping the city, um, really bring that entire space back to community. So I appreciate, um, that you've, you've done that, uh, with this. Um, I deeply appreciate, um, the affordability, um, uh, covenant that you've placed on this. I think sixty percent is incredibly, um, helpful and useful in that location. Obviously, across the river, we've seen a lot, a couple market rate, um, apartment complexes, uh, come up that have no affordability requirement. Um, and then, uh, just southwest of there is, um, Denver Housing Authority that has deep affordability requirements. So we're striking a balance, um, in an air, in an area where we want a lot of people with, um, running the entire spectrum of incomes. And so I, I thank you for contributing to that. Um, and just look forward to activating it much more. Um, I know, um, uh, Jesse commented on, uh, multifamily. I know Jesse commented on multifamily housing right next to highways. It's all I see when I go up by twenty-five, so I don't know what makes this any different. So I appreciate you doing it in a way that really involves the community. So thank you so much. Happy to support and encourage my colleagues to, yes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, welcome. Council members, Albius, Flynn, Gilmore, Gonzalez Gutierrez, Hi.
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 Cashman, Lewis, Parity, Lindar Campbell, Sawyer, Swartis, Watson.
Aye.
Madam President, sound of all?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, closing voting, announce the results. Twelve ayes. Twelve ayes, Council Bill zero nine zero. Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill zero nine one seven for an ordinance concerning the organization and creation of the Broadway Denver General Improvement District in the City and County of Denver, creating the District Advisory Board and appointing the initial members thereof and approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six work plan, budget thereof, and making appropriations for the budget years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill twenty-five dash zero nine one seven be placed upon final consideration and hand to you.
It has been moved. And seconded? The required public hearing for Council Bill zero nine one seven is open. Will you please have this back apart?
Of course. Good evening, members of City Council. My name is Dennis Fergenek, and I'm an analyst on the capital planning and programming team of the Department of Finance. I am here today to give a brief staff report on Council Bill twenty-five dash oh nine one seven, a bill for an ordinance concerning the organization and creation of the Broadway Denver General Improvement District in the City and County of Denver, creating the District Advisory Board and appointing the initial members thereof, and approving the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six work plan and budget thereof, and making appropriations for the budget year twenty twenty-five and twenty-six. For support, we have representatives from the City Attorney's Office, Dottie, and the Broadway Merchants Association, who have been leading efforts to create the proposed Broadway Denver GID, knows that public hearing has been provided in accordance with state statute. So on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, the City and County of Denver received and filed a petition from the Broadway Merchants Association that satisfied the statutory requirements to create a general improvement district. The petition was filed with the city clerk and is in conformity with state statutes under City Clerk filing number twenty twenty-five oh one oh four. State statute requires a petition for creation to be signed by at least thirty percent or two hundred electors, whichever is less, or thirty percent of the electors in the district, proposed district, or two hundred, whichever is less.
Hey, Dennis, producer, can I put this slide deck up?
Ultimately, it's just that I was not using the slide deck for this.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Okay. So for the proposed Broadway Denver GID, the collected signatures totaled two hundred and ten electors and estimated twelve hundred and sixty-nine electors in the proposed GID boundaries. And so this total number of signatures satisfies the statutorily required minimum amount to proceed. The proposed district boundaries are generally described as six apps to the north, properties on the western edge of Lincoln Streets to the east, I twenty-five to the south, and properties fronting the west side of Broadway up to the alley between Akoma to the west. The boundaries of the proposed GID overlap with three existing local maintenance districts, the Broadway Pedestrian Mall Phase Two, the Broadway Pedestrian Mall A, and the Broadway Pedestrian Mall B, local maintenance districts. Upon successful creation of the GID, it is expected that the Dottie will separately request that the local maintenance districts are dissolved, and upon dissolution, the GID, subject to any additional agreements, will be responsible for maintenance and repair of the local maintenance districts' public improvements. To fund its operations, the proposed GID will impose mill levy up to eight point nine six mils on all taxable real and personal property. Due to the timing of the GID approval, the GID will be unable to impose a mill levy in twenty twenty-six and is instead expected to impose a rate in twenty twenty-six equivalent to the imposition of eight point nine six mil levy. The GID will not be authorized to impose a mill levy at the same time as is imposing the previously referenced rate, and then they will seek to impose this mill levy for collection twenty twenty-seven. Local maintenance district revenue, reserve revenues to the extent available are also anticipated to be transferred over to the GID upon local maintenance district dissolution. Assuming approval tonight, the district will seek electoral authorization at its November special organized election to also authorize the mill levy in other labor-related matters. It is estimated that the GID's revenue will be approximately one point one million one hundred and twenty thousand, beginning in twenty twenty-six. The GID is anticipated to spend its funds on safety and security, cleaning, maintenance, infrastructure, landscaping, other special projects, and as well as branding, marketing, programming, and the administration management of the GID itself. Certain proposed services of the GID, such as security services, will only be provided pursuant to one or more future intergovernmental agreements with the city. While it is expected to seek electoral authorization to issue debt in November, the district will not be authorized to actually issue any debt unless and until it comes back to City Council for further approval. The services facilities improvements to be created by the GID are not intended to duplicate or replace the services facilities improvements provided by the City and County of Denver within the proposed district boundaries. The GID is being created to provide enhanced and otherwise unavailable services and improvements within its boundaries. Per state statute, City Council is the ex officio board of directors for the Broadway GID. However, the proposed ordinance also creates a district advisory board, which has delegated many of the day-to-day operations of the district. The advisory board will also recommend a district annual work plan and budget for City Council approval each year. The initial advisory board shall consist of eleven voting members. The proposed board members will include at least one of the following: an owner of a commercial property in the boundaries, an owner of a retail business in the boundaries, an owner of a food and beverage business in the boundaries, an owner of residential property in the boundaries, a resident in the boundaries, the city councilperson representing the majority of the total acreage within the district, and a representative of the Department of Finance, in this case, the CFO. Additionally, Dottie and Safety will be included in advisory board meeting invitations to ensure their awareness of district activities. Approval of this creation ordinance does not approve any specific development plan or change in zoning. City Council approval this evening allows, subject to further voter approval, the creation of the new GID, the appointment of the district advisory board, the approval of a twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six work plan and budget, and allows the proposed district election proponents to be held this November. Excellent presented information, C-Staff recommends, subject to voter, to further voter approval, that the approval of the, C-Staff approved, City recommends the approval of the creation of the Broadway Denver GID Improvement District, the creation of the GID's advisory board, the appointment of the initial members of the district advisory board, and the approval of the GID's twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six work plan and budget. As I mentioned earlier, we have proponents of the proposed Broadway Denver GID. The district here to support and answer any questions as they arise. With that, I conclude my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. We have fifteen individuals sign up to speak this evening. If you are here in person after a minute's call, please make your way up to the front bench. If you are in Zoom, please make, accept the motion when called upon. I'm going to call the first five speakers so that you all could come up to the front. Lucia Brown, Jesse Paris, Catlin Bronn, Beth Fluto, and William Feinberg. First up, we have Lucia Brown.
Good evening, Council. Hello. My name is Lucia Brown, and I live in the Baker neighborhood, immediately adjacent to Broadway. I've lived here for twenty-eight years and have seen many changes along the corridor. If Broadway is to continue to glow up, then this GID needs to be implemented. Keeping Broadway the vibrant destination it has become means keeping it clean and giving a feeling of security. The Improvement District has been discussed since at least twenty fourteen, when I ran for council, so it's due time. Please vote yes on zero one, zero nine one seven. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jesse Paris. Recording in progress. Is Jesse there? For good sir?
Yes, I am here. Thank you for promoting me to panelist. Yes, my name is Jesse LaShawn Paris, and I'm representative for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Commers Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the Northeast Denver Residence Council, Frontline Black News, Shabaka's Black Experience Enhanced the Revolutionary Agenda. And I reside at the CTH Home, Legacy Law, in the fine district of District Nine in Darrell Watson's District. I am against this, and I'm gonna tell you why I'm against it. Because I've seen how these Jeds and these Bids have operated all over this city, specifically in my district and the Five Points. It has not bettered the district. It has not bettered the corridor of Welton Street. We have lost our culture. We have lost what has made us identifiable to the rest of the world. And it is just another way of pushing out the undesirables, the unhoused neighbors, the people that were here before the migrants arrived here. This is a form of NIMBYism, out of sight, out of mind. I don't want to see any kind of poverty. You have a whole Twitter page called Do Better Denver, where they, all they do is pictures of people along Broadway corridor using drugs, doing all kinds of illegal stuff, and this is your way of trying to throw away with that. These things don't benefit the people that have traditionally called these areas home. All they have done is made it easier for the gentrifiers to feel at home and at peace. So I would ask that you not vote yes on this. There's got to be something else you can do. You don't need to have a JED to make sure that the area is safely protected from undesirables and people that you don't want to see or interact with or deal with. All these are as an excuse to force people out that they don't feel deserve to be there. But then at the same time, I say, oh, everybody deserves to be here unless you make so-and-so amount of money, unless you check so-and-so box, and unless you are the complexion for the protection, which I am clearly not. So I would ask that you vote no on this. Thank you.
Next up, we have.
This place was beautiful, but after a few months, I started to wonder where the character was. Where are the punk kids, the old houses, the history, the soul? I wondered if Denver had that, and then one day it took a wrong turn and ended up on Broadway. I passed dive bars, Irish pubs, gritty independent stores. There were interesting people milling about, and I thought to myself, okay, this is what I'm looking for. My husband and I came back the next evening to explore. We found ourselves in a little spot called Player's Pub. The bartender was chatty, charming, and attentive, and despite being COVID, you could definitely feel an energy in the place. It was the first time since moving we genuinely felt welcome and had a great time. So naturally, we went back the very next night. That same bartender was there. As soon as he saw us, he greeted us by name. We thought to ourselves, we've found our people. Within the next year, we bought a house two blocks away. They asked me to start working there. And that bartender who made me feel so welcome, his name is Colin, and he's one of my dearest friends. That is Broadway. Since moving to the neighborhood, I've joined the board of the LBC R and L and become a volunteer with the Merchants Association. I've met amazing people who love this community, many of whom have invested in homes and businesses in the area. But over the past several years, the obstacle that this community fights against each and every day continue to pile up. Every day, I see people using drugs on the street, passed out in the right of way. I've seen women, both completely topless and bottomless, walking up the street. I have seen auto eroticism more than once on the street. I pick up human feces, needles, and drugs off the street on a regular basis. I've consoled two of my coworkers after two different shootings that happened on the street while they were working. And I also was walking to the bar on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, when I heard screams so shrill, I can still hear them in my head today. I tried to console the hysterical victims who poured out of Soul Tribe the best I could, while I called nine-one-one and was put on hold. Despite these obstacles, Broadway persists. There are good people, many of whom are in this room, doing hard work to hold things together. People who give their time, energy, even their own money to this community. We're at a tipping point, though. We can only do so much with our limited resources and authority. A recent Westward article about UMS said the festival is one of the few times that Broadway actually looks and feels like a major street in a real city. Well, that just damn near broke my heart, because UMS is gone now, but there are still people who work and live here, doing everything they can to improve Broadway. My home, my friends, and my heart are on Broadway, and we deserve to be considered a real street three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Please push the JED forward so we can have the resources we need to realize our potential.
They're gonna do it. They're gonna do it anyway.
Thank you. Next up, we have Beth Fluto.
Good evening, Madam President and Councilpeople. My name is Beth Fluto, and I'm the president of Baker Historic Neighborhood Association, which is where Broadway, South Broadway resides. I've come to voice my support of the Broadway General Improvement District and the huge difference that it can make in the safety and security of our neighborhood. As someone who lives quite close, I'm on South Broadway almost daily and am very concerned about the people hanging out there on drugs. They can be passed out in vacant doorways, on the sidewalk, cursing loudly, or worse yet, doing what they call the fentanyl flop, all in broad daylight. I, like most Bakerites, love all that Broadway has to offer and will not allow this to stop me from frequenting it, though it's certainly less appealing. My biggest, my greatest concern is actually how it makes some of our visitors feel uncomfortable when they come to visit Broadway. I've experienced this firsthand when my adult daughter and teenage granddaughter went to dinner with me and were afraid to go strolling down Broadway in dusk. The twenty-four-seven security guards that the JED will bring to Broadway are key in changing this situation. I truly believe it is the only thing that will greatly deter the drug use. Our police force do what they can, but they will be the first to tell you that they are stretched and cannot come near to that level of security presence. I am also very excited about the aesthetic improvements the JED will bring to Broadway in the way of more planters and more trees. Baker is a low canopy neighborhood, and it's actually sixty-eight degrees hotter than some more forested neighborhoods, such as Wash Park. As a side note, BH and H is working to plant a hundred and fifty trees in Baker by the state's one hundred and fiftieth birthday, and the JED would really help us meet this leafy goal. In closing, I hope you will vote your support for the South Broadway General Improvement District and help secure the future of South Broadway's businesses, residents, and neighbors. In all its quirky charm, quote Westward. There's really no place in Denver quite like South Broadway. Let's keep it a destination that feels safe and welcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have William Feinberg.
Thank you, Council, for giving me and all of us the opportunity. The general idea is informing about this Broadway GID. I myself have owned real estate in the city of Denver since nineteen seventy-one, and so I've seen a lot of history here and a lot of great change and some that would have been nice not to have participated in or seen. In addition to that, I've owned commercial property on Broadway in this district for over twenty years and have really seen the evolution of Broadway, which is a major street in the city. Right now, we have a unique situation. The city of Denver, as was said earlier in one of the other discussions, primarily gets its revenue from sales tax. And sales tax, as everybody knows in the city of Denver, is threatened. It's not growing the way it needs to to meet the luminous needs that the city has. I mean, it's, you cannot come up with enough money for what the city's needing, and therefore, the city really needs to support the continued growth of small businesses and of the sales tax revenue. I own property on Broadway and have about ten different small retail tenants and as well as a number of vacant spots, there's been a number of tenants that have gone out of business on the Broadway corridor in the last couple of years. There's also a number of tenants that are having a hard time. And without question, every one of them thinks that what's needed is to change the feelings about what Broadway is, to change the perception of it. It's great to have the merchants supported by local residents, but what we need is more people from outside the city, from Inglewood, from Middleton, from Morgana, from all the different areas, to feel invited, comfortable, safe, and excited about visiting. and excited about visiting unique stores that are on Broadway. One thing that's great about Broadway is it's not a mall. It's mostly filled with independent retailers, small, small stores that create a certain character that you can't get anywhere else. And when I speak to people that are from Littleton, Inglewood, the suburbs, they feel that Broadway is sketchy. It's a perception. This perception needs to be changed. One way it can be changed is with more marketing. One way it can be changed is with more cleanliness, cleaning up um, waste, human waste, debris. Um, having safety patrols there that are visible so that people feel comfortable coming down there, bringing their kids down there, visiting there and spending their money.
Thank you so much. We have Luke Johnson.
Look, it's all gentrifiers.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Luke Johnson. I've owned a pet supply shop on Broadway for the last nine years. I'm a fourth generation Coloradan. Um, I graduated East High School as well as University of Northern Colorado. I'm the president of Broadway Merchants Association as well. Five and a half years ago and about two months before COVID, I replied to a volunteer request email from Broadway Merchants Association. Unbeknownst to me, most of the folks running a VMA were selling their businesses, moving out of state or burned down with volunteering. Since I was the only person to reply to the email, I was gifted the responsibility of a few hundred dollars in a bank account and email, uh, email list and of course the Broadway Halloween Parade. I had no experience to run an R and O parade, um, but I was eager to make a difference on Broadway. I had no idea what I was doing. With more than two hundred and twenty businesses in our district and more, more than ninety-five percent of them being small and independent, this felt really important to me. After COVID took a metaphorical wrecking ball to Broadway, we began meeting monthly again and the chorus of frustration became loud. People were angry that windows were getting broken daily. Alley's were grosser than ever before, trees were dead, Halloween Parade was unlikely to continue. And yes, homelessness had become a problem like never before. Suddenly people were looking at me to fix the street, most not understanding that I'm just a volunteer with no authority and no funding mechanism of any type. Sometime in twenty twenty-one, Councilman Joel and Clark suggested I create an improvement district and that began a four-year process that brings us to today. We discerned a budget, a mill levy, needs of the community, gathered bids from service providers and canvassed to gauge feedback. We've raised nearly a hundred thousand dollars from the community, uh, of community donations and uh, including some residents that don't even live in the district. I won't bother you with the details of what type of sidewalk mounted recycling bins we want or where we want to put light poles, but I'll ask you to consider this. If you feel that this JID is not a good idea, what is your plan to fix Broadway?
What plan?
You see, right now we can't even get through an R and O one this fast without a team. The standard van is great, but we need more of them to make an impact. Perhaps most importantly, what will you tell the waitress who is assaulted walking home at two AM after a double shift? Will you tell her that we might have been able to prevent future assaults on other grounds? If we'd had more lighting in the alleys and regular patrols from a GID employee? Or we're not a small brewery where whoever's had his copper wire stripped from his business twice in the last six months and now he's thinking of just closing altogether? Or will you tell the dozens of cyclists who get hit by cars crossing the bike lane because the city failed to put caution signs at each curb cut? And yes, without including the district, the future of the Halloween Parade remains uncertain. These are real stories from real people. Broadway is again at a tipping point and it's headed in the wrong direction. Please give us the opportunity to improve our own destiny. I hope to walk Broadway with at least one of you in a couple of years and as we walk beneath the shade of the trees we planted, I hope that we can admire our community and rebound. Thank you.
Thank you. The next five speakers are Benjamin Todd, Brad Dean, Brittany Spinner, Spinner and Scott Happel. It's again Benjamin Todd and Brad Dean.
To improve Broadway, motherfuckers.
Benjamin Todd, now?
They're lucky I ain't there in person, cuz.
Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ben Todd. I own two businesses on South Broadway for the last five years. And my leases continue the next five to seven years. I met my businesses on Broadway every day, often until three AM. For five years, I've seen firsthand the changes Broadway has experienced. Broadway should rival Austin Sixth Street, Nashville Second Street, Wisconsin State Street. I'm here to voice my strong support for the proposed Broadway General Improvement District to help make that happen.
It should be Lily White.
I used to live in Baker Tower, just three blocks from my business on Broadway. But when I learned the rent was only a hundred and fifty dollars more to live in Cherry Creek, just a mile away, it was a no-brainer. Now instead of my window overlooking the back of the seven eleven dumpster where homeless drug dealers are regular. Now I'm next to the Cherry Creek Mall with a riverwalk that's well taken care of and a view of the mountains. My wife tells me this is from the GID that she's met people running. I never thought I'd be on a first-name basis with the police department, district commander, or many of the officers. In my five years on Broadway, I've had a gun pulled on me, a knife pulled on me, a brick thrown in my business. We were adjacent to the tattoo shop shooter who killed our neighboring Broadway business owner in twenty twenty-one. I was there just two weeks ago when DPD detained a person holding a rifle out of a window that a local restaurant customer spotted from across the street. I once served two young lady customers who had an older transit person pull his pants down and shake his genitals at them. I actually had a young male employee quit because he didn't want to have to deal with, his words, crazy tweakers. The solution to all of these examples I just told you about is a strong presence. Whether it's me, my wife, who is now Blue Bell Jiu-Jitsu, my employees or a local patron, all it takes is someone standing up for Broadway, keeping a watch. Now I keep a photo album of vagrants rifling through the trash outside my business or when they park themselves outside places that have been for lease for years. Uh, if you guys would like access to it, I'm very easy to find and connect with. I could show you fifteen places in the surrounding six blocks that have been for lease for more than two years, but doesn't inspire customers, it attracts vagrants. When this GID is approved, Broadway will be cleaner, safer and someone will be standing watch over the investment. Customers will know it because they'll see it, just like Sixteenth Street Mall or Cherry Creek. Empty storefronts will be leased, crimes by vagrants will be deterred and I will be alone in defending and promoting the success of where I spend ninety-five percent of my time. Broadway needs this GID more than you know. It will solve problems for landlords, tenants and anybody who wants to visit Broadway.
Thank you. Next up, Brad Dean. And after Brad, Brittany Spinner.
Madam President, Councilmembers. My name is Brad Dean and I'm one of the owners of the Yonfor Mechanics, a small business on Broadway and I'm here to uh, voice my support of the General Improvement District. I'm here today because I care deeply about this neighborhood and I want to speak to the struggles Broadway and the Baker neighborhood have been facing for some time now. Like many urban corridors, we've seen an increase in safety concerns, visible signs of distress in public spaces and lack of consistent maintenance that affects both perception and day-to-day experience on the street. In the past year, we've lost cornerstone businesses like the Mutiny Information Cafe, True Brewery and Banded Oak, places that helped define the culture in the heart of Broadway. And just last month, the Underground Music Showcase, one of the city's biggest independent music festivals, announced that this year's event would be our last. The creation of the General Improvement District is our effort to maintain and improve the neighborhood of the city. By the residents and businesses who work and live here, to consist of services to make a real difference. Things like enhanced cleaning, safety, beautification and support for the cultural life of the corridor. These are the kinds of improvements Broadway has needed for years and they directly shape how people experience this part of Denver. Many of us are independently doing anything we can to keep Broadway vibrant, clean, safe and welcoming, but it's not enough. Other areas of the city are seeing major investments being revitalized and are thriving. Without a pathway to addressing Broadway's urgent needs, I only see us falling behind. This General Improvement District is how we buck that trend and who better to do it than the people who know this area best? I spent most of my life being extremely skeptical about tax increases, so I don't take something like this lightly. But this is our chance to be proactive and build a stronger, more sustainable future for Broadway. I ask that you vote in support of the JID. Thank you for your time.
Bethany Spinner?
Good evening. My name is Brittany Spinner and I'm a proud resident of South Lincoln Street. If you ask most of us who live on Lincoln Street, we'll tell you the same thing. We love it here. People choose this street because it's, because of its deep connection to the energy of Broadway. We live here because we love being part of a vibrant local community that's within short, short reach. Over the last several years, Broadway has faced some serious challenges. Crimes and instability have chipped away at its core. We've seen beloved businesses close their doors. We've watched brand new young business owners have a grand opening only to have their windows smashed soon after. Several businesses fight every day to protect their electrical systems from being destroyed and dismantled for scrap. But through all of this, I have also seen that there is a large community who loves Broadway with all of their heart and wants it desperately to succeed. They live it, they breathe it and they see a future that it can be. Lincoln and Broadway have always been connected as neighbors and partners for better for worse. When they are struggling, we feel it too. The decision to extend the district to include Lincoln Street is not only appreciated, it's visionary, it's generous and it's purposeful. The district has listened to our residents, heard the challenges that we have and have really thought about what they can do with the power of this district to make it thrive. We too will benefit from improved, safer and cleaner alleys, security, reduction of the blighted areas and the mut- beautification of both Broadway and Lincoln. That's why I want to speak in strong support of the Broadway Merchants Association and their incredible efforts to establish the Broadway General Improvement District. I am a big believer that this General Improvement District is the strength that we need to help Broadway thrive and turn it back into the miracle mile that it was once known as. Thank you.
Next up we have Scott Happel.
I don't know where they have to go to, but they can't be over here. Typical white supremacist.
Um, I'm Scott Happel. I moved to Denver in two thousand and eight. I'm one of the owners of the Oriental Theater up at Forty-fourth and Tennyson. And after COVID, when a longtime punk rock club in one of my favorite places, Three Kings on South Broadway was forced to close due to COVID. Uh, myself and a business partner were happy to lease that property and try to maintain the, the live music vibe on South Broadway. So HQ was born during COVID and then continues to exist there today. And along with the Hi-Dive and the Skylark are a key part of the music, live music scene in Denver, all of us being locally and independently owned. Um, I don't know any good reason not to do the JID. I'm here in strong support of it. You've heard lots about the security issues on, on the street. At HQ, we had to spend fifteen thousand dollars to include, to uh, put in a couple of security gates along our front door to keep our almost entirely female staff safe to coming in out of work because there's a lot of crime and issues going on there. Um, I love the block. I love the, this part of the city. It's why I wanted to stay in Denver between UMS, which is now leaving and all the other businesses on the street. Um, it was the part of Denver I fell in love with and now uh, so much of it is closing. The Hornet just announced that they are closing on Friday. Um, the Information Cafe is gone, Senior Burrito is gone. All of these are locally owned, many POC owned businesses that just can't make it on the block anymore because of all of the issues that we have. And so all of us that are still there have gotten together to try to do this JID to keep the block alive and keep those of us that are still in business there able to survive and stop. Like none of us feel like gentrifiers because we're all small, local owned businesses. But as places like the Hornet and other places close, it's going to be giant nationally run corporations that are going to be the only places that can afford to move in. So help us out and please vote yes.
No.
Thank you. The last four speakers are Scott Davis, Chris Speck, Adam Estrada and Mark Deaver. Um, and Anna Spensley, Spensley, sorry if I mispronounced it. Scott Davis? Is there Scott Davis in the house? No? All right, Chris Speck. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
No, it's fine. Chris Speck, thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. Um, uh, thank you for having me uh, speak tonight. Um, with the General Improvement District, you'll support, you'll signal support for small businesses. I drove last Sunday, uh, taking time out of my day from Sixth all the way down to I twenty-five to take the roughly inventory of the number of businesses that were open. The businesses that exist and the businesses that are vacant. I counted two hundred and twenty-six businesses between Sixth Ave and I twenty-five. Of those two hundred and twenty-six business spaces, I saw forty-six that were currently vacant. So that's roughly about twenty percent vacancy rate. I myself am a business owner and having predictability is key to running a successful business and reducing some risk. If you ha- have a General Improvement District, you create predictability, you create, reduce risk. You prevent damages to businesses.
No, you don't.
You allow business to thrive with foot traffic, with people that come, not just railways, but people like they said, from other communities like Inglewood, from Forten, from other places around the city. Each business space represents an opportunity for an entrepreneur from any background, any background to start a business by bringing their dream alive. A new business in these vacant spaces with a General Improvement District backing, showing your support for them, giving them the support that they need. This creates tax dollars. This creates tax dollars, tax dollars via the property taxes that you collect with the sales taxes that they, that they tax their customers with, that you also gain as well. So I implore you, please, 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 vote yes on zero nine one seven.
Thank you. Next up, Adam Estrada.
Uh, hey, city council. Thank you for having me. I'm Adam Estrada. I live in the Baker neighborhood. Um, I work at a coworking space on Broadway, wearing a shirt from Sone, uh, got my pants from FM. Uh, shop at a lot of stores on Broadway, go to Luke's store for my pets' food. Um, but you know, I noticed the, the conditions that all the business owners have described. Um, it does feel like there's a lot of drug use, a lot of, you know, disorderly conduct on the street. Um, you know, we are really transit accessible, which I love too, but a lot of people come there. So, you know, we have to deal with both sides. Um, you know, most recently just last week, the Wizard's Chest next to where I work, window smashed. Uh, so again, I hope the JID can just, you know, help uh, business owners deal with what are right now unexpected expenses they have to cover and just kind of help, you know, keep things more orderly and manage it. Uh, thank you very much for your time and you've heard a lot of this. Um, please vote yes.
Thank you. Next up, Mark Deaver.
Madam Chairperson and council, thank you very much for your time tonight. And you've heard a lot about the problems we have on Broadway, but I want to tell you a story about partnership. Um, partners, I've learned a lot about partnerships because I was with the city for a number of years as an assistant director for Parks and Recreation. I've served some uh, some years as president of Baker Neighborhood Association. And I, I learned that partners make the difference. Um, it's, it's just incredible how um, uh, a, people working together can make a community safer, can make a community grow and can make it more sustainable. Um, and what I want to commend um, is the um, the Broadway Merchants Association stepping up, taxing themselves, um, you know, being in the forefront and really making uh, an important contribution. And but we are partners and, and um, the, not only the Baker neighborhood, but the Broadway Lincoln neighborhood, the West Wash Park neighborhood. All of us have worked very successfully together to uh, work with the uh, Denver Police Department, with the library, with DPS, with um, Parks and Rec. And that's what makes the community whole. But this um, this huge endeavor um, for a, a General Improvement District is going to make a huge difference. And I just encourage you, um, just like all my um, neighbors and colleagues here, um, to please um, um, be our partner, step up and be with us uh, and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our last speaker for the night is Anna Spensky.
Good evening, uh, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm the last one. I'll try to be brief. Um, I'm the owner of Waterworks Car Wash. That's right on Broadway and Third. And I just wanted to speak in favor of creating the GID. Um, I'll start with a quick personal note. Um, when I moved to Denver in two thousand and six, I was immediately drawn and impressed by um, Waterworks and its authentic Denver feel. Um, the energy and the character of the neighborhood quickly drew me in. And uh, when I got opportunity to got involved with the business, I was super excited. I was motivated by its fantastic location and the possibility of owning a true local Denver business. Um, years later, um, I remain confident that Waterworks operates in a prime spot with incredible potential, incredible neighbors, as you have all witnessed today. And um, unfortunately we do have problems. Um, the energy has now. Um, the energy has not been the same as it was in 2006. Um, the storefronts are closing and, um, it's heartbreaking and it's concerning. Um, that's why I support forming the, the GID. And I feel like if we all come together, um, we can pull our resources and then we will save in the corridor's, uh, future. I feel like alone, I can only invest in my building, my property, uh, but together we can, um, make, um, lasting change. Um, I view the potential increase of, um, taxes as an investment and, um, um, I think it's a smart investment and, um, will fund, uh, help funding crucial services, maintenance, security, health, uh, with, um, alley cleanup and beautification of the area. I also believe that with that, we can stay competitive and keep this corridor vibrant. Um, but to do that, we, we need to make those improvements. Um, I also feel like we're getting some new neighbors with new developments, new apartments and nearby. But we, um, have a potential to welcome new, um, residents and new, um, members of our little community. Uh, but we, um, have to invite them. We have to provide a safe environment for them to visit and, um, shop and dine and, um, make the neighborhood safe for them to, to be there. Um, I feel like this isn't just about today. It's about setting Broadway up for long-term, uh, long-term success. Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes our speakers. Do we have questions from members of council on Council Bill 0917?
They got this one in the bag. Was she all happy to?
Councilment Torres.
Thank you, Madam President. Is, um, if you don't know who's, might be able to speak to, like, how we would, the community would set up the private security side of this proposal? Okay, can you come on up to the mic? Good evening, Jamie DeLisicencho. I'm a consultant to the Broadway Merchants Association. Thank you, Jamie. Can you just tell me how, um, a, a vendor is, um, sought out? Um, what kind of standards? I, I ask this under the caveat, I think it is overall a really excellent, big proposal. And I know it's, it's kind of, um, weaving together to existing, uh, entities that can work much better together. I've heard mention of the, um, private security and just really cautious about having private securities swing a little too far in, in some directions where, um, it's easy to violate civil rights protections and, um, overextend, you know, the, um, the power that might be handed and having not very, like, fewer, um, leverage points for oversight. So just wondering kind of how that's set up, how it's managed, just so I know a little bit more.
Yes, great questions. Um, first of all, it's important to note, we did and have looked at other districts and what they're doing around safety and security. Um, you have multiple districts in the city that are using different vendors. And it's all somewhat different approaches, I think. Um, we, when we, uh, as was mentioned, I think by Dennis in the presentation, before the district can even delivery, deliver security services, we have to, um, complete an intergovernmental agreement with the Denver Police Department that states what we can and cannot do and draws the line between, um, what's the police's responsibility, what's private security's responsibility, um, and how that works. We're not looking at armed security here. This is more of a presence. I think the Ballpark ambassadors through the Ballpark JID that were launched have done a really good job of, they're the eyes on the street. They work, they have daily briefings with the police. They have daily briefings with host, um, on house members in the community. They're working collaborative, daily collaboratively, so they're sort of that missing middle in terms of connecting the dots and helping to address things. Um, so this isn't heavy-handed security. There are a lot of protections, but intergovernmental has to be renewed every year, so there can be holdback if there's been issues in the area. Um, but we have received estimates from multiple different firms and ultimately, once the district is formed, they'll need to go do kind of a final request for bids and talk through all of those situations to make sure it's the right fit, um, for the district. Okay, thank you so much. You're super helpful. Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you. Councilman Torres, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And, and Jamie, I might ask you to come back up, but I'm not, I'm not sure if you're the person to answer. But, um, thank you, Councilment Torres, for those questions, because those were some similar questions that I had around the safety and security piece, just wanting to better understand what that all entails. Um, and hearing, excuse me, that it, it sounds like it is, when we're talking about safety and security, that it is only talking about a vendor that would be providing 24/7 security. And I guess I'm asking that because I've seen other JIDs and bids that incorporate other types of measures that could help provide resources or connect people to resources not to just kind of band-aid the situation, I guess, for lack of a better word. Yep.
Um, and that's a great question. So I, there are some really great, robust models out there. And again, I will reference the Ballpark JID because they're doing all these things, right? Um, they have been, have formed an incredible, the ambassador team, incredible partnership with the city. And I applaud Councilman Watson, who's been a huge part of setting that up. Um, the mayor's office, Evan Dryer, um, host, the chief of police has been in our meetings. It's been a very coordinated effort to really figure out how do we partner, stay in communication, um, identify, right now, there are great relationships, for example, Ballpark with the social service providers. They have daily communications of what beds are available, what spaces are available, um, with all in Denver. They're actually helping place people with the help of the city of Denver. So it's a very good back-and-forth relationship that's really about connecting the dots. Again, we're talking about eyes on the street and deterrence. There's no heavy hand. These safety folks can't make arrests. They can't pull a weapon. They can't handcuff people. Um, but they can do really great things. Um, the, some of the Broadway folks came and did some shadowing with the Ballpark ambassadors a few weeks ago. And the ambassador team was telling them that they had, um, an individual who was, who had overdosed and they administered four Narcan's and brought him back while they were waiting for the, um, ambulance to arrive. And that person got up and walked away on their own and was fine. So I think that's the type of thing. They can almost be the first people on the street. They can assess, um, they can really be helping. So again, this is about getting people to services, getting people the help they need. And hopefully, by having eyes on the street every day, deterring crime from happening, um, in some capacity.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Um, my last question, real quick, um, because I heard a lot of, um, concern of, like, businesses closing and, but I kind of, I guess I heard a couple of mixed things and I'm curious if there is any assessment that has been done to, um, provide information of why businesses closed? Was it because of the cost of their lease? Was it because of, you know, the, um, you know, the safety concerns? Like, what, what were the reasons? Do we know, like, how, what are those reasons were? I would ask if Luke could, um, as the head of the Broadway Merchants Association, if he could speak to that.
Hi, thanks for your question. Um, I think it's a multitude of factors and I think crime is one of them, right? It's not the only one, right? There's others. Um, I think we see interest rates high right now. So every time a building or parcel trades hands and we have a new building owner, even if that new building owner breaks even on the mortgage, it's now 7% and that building was probably paid off 30 years ago, right? So we're, we're facing some kind of macroeconomic headwinds as well. Obviously, there's uncertainty in the, the larger United States right now. Um, and so there's that. Um, I, and I won't lie to you too. I, I think that, um, constantly increasing minimum wage has been difficult. And I don't say that to say that we shouldn't have a minimum wage, but I, the reason I say that is because the municipalities around us don't have the same minimum wage. So a business owner would say, oh, well, I can just go to Inglewood, which is what happened to Mutiny Information Cafe and they can, uh, you know, pay five bucks less an hour, right? And do the same amount of business, right? So we're, we're kind of seeing like a flight of those issues and then we're also seeing better police response, generally speaking, in many of the surrounding municipalities. So, um, you know, I think it's a lot of factors and I don't want to get too, you know, rambling about it, but, um, we're only going to be able to fix some of them, you know.